Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the City Council of Jersey Village. Today, Monday, November sixteenth. I'm gonna move into item A, call the order and announce a form is present, Madam Secretary of form is present?
Yes.
All right, moving to item B, invocation and pledge, prayer and pledge by council member Drew Watson.
Hi Drew. Hello, if you'll please join me in the invocation. Heavenly Father, this month of Thanksgiving, we're grateful for all the gifts you provide to us, our prosperity, our health, our family and our friends. We ask for your protection of our emergency workers and first responders. We ask for your power of healing and inspiration. Tonight, we ask for your inspiration and guidance as the council deliberates city business. And may you continue to bless this great city, this great state, and please God, please continue to bless United States of America. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Drew. Moving to item C, citizens and comments. Students who have signed a card and wish to speak to city council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and council members are prevented from discussing the subject. You may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to counsel. First person I have is Mark Malloy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name's Mark Malloy. I live at seventy-eight oh three Hamilton Circle, past city council member of the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens comments for the eleven sixteen twenty twenty city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and written documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am speaking and asking questions during the citizens comments portion of tonight's city council meeting to ask the city government and city manager about regular agenda item number four, which is about the allocations of the city's sales tax. I am asking for an answer from either the city manager, mayor, or council members to my questions. The city government may decide to reallocate the current one and a half cent sales tax for property tax relief fund that is estimated to receive one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars this year to some other funds such as a community development fund or an existing streets and sidewalks maintenance fund. Will the city get to receive an additional one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars of additional property tax revenue before the city reaches the three point five percent cap enacted by the new last year's state of Texas property tax reform legislation that will require the city to have to allow the voters to vote during a city held election if the citizens want the city government to receive the additional property tax revenue. The city government in the year nineteen ninety-five with the taxpayers approval chose to enact the one half of one cent sales tax for property tax relief fund. Why now is the current city government wanting to change this sales tax from property tax relief fund? The state of Texas government saw an increasing problem with continual increases in the amount of property tax that property owners were having to pay to their local taxing authorities and worked to enact legislation to help citizens of the state of Texas. The city government, I believe, should not be looking for ways to circumvent the citizens of Jersey Village from getting their needed property tax reduction relief. The city of Jersey Village, Texas, and I've said this several times over the last year or so, is that per the M have stockpiled an estimated seventeen point five million dollars that they are planning to spend on multi-multi-million dollar projects without the Jersey Village taxpayers being allowed to vote during a regularly held or special election to vote to approve the city government spending the city revenue on the very expensive projects. So basically, the question that I asked previously is by the city government deciding to move this, you know, sales taxes, half-cent sales tax from the property relief fund, is it going to allow them to receive the additional one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars in additional property tax revenue before they reach the three point five percent cap? So that's the question.
All right, thanks, Mark.
So, I mean, is my time up or are you guys?
Fifty-eight seconds left.
And so, do you said fifty-eight seconds or how many seconds?
Fifty-two.
Okay, so, I mean, with me asking you the question about if you're going to receive this additional money by changing this sales tax fund, are you going to be able to receive the additional money by moving this money, you know, this fund, the half percent sales tax revenue for property tax relief? Like moving it to a different fund, are you going to basically enable the city government to receive this additional, you know, per this year? It'll be different next year, but per this year, one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars?
I don't believe it's, it impacts this fiscal year. We'll force discuss a little more as we get to that agenda item, but yeah, I don't believe it impacts this year because I believe when we allocate these things, it has to go to a citizen vote.
That's correct. It wouldn't, there would be nothing that would go into effect until the citizens vote. And then however the citizens authorize the expenditure, the funds that.
And, okay, so, so, you know, what, I'll kind of quit here in just a second, but all I want to know is, is the citizens going to be told if this is changed from what it is now to where the city is going to be able to collect more property tax revenue by the city changing this fund to a different fund?
We're not changing our property tax rates, we're not changing anything like that, this impacts.
The property tax, the property tax rate you guys have has stayed the same since, I think, two thousand and six.
We lowered it last time.
Huh?
We lowered it last time.
It came down a little bit this, this last year. Okay, so, but anyway, basically, that was the question is what I'm trying to find out is if somehow by you changing this, if it's going to allow the city to collect more property tax revenue before they reach the three point five percent cap?
No, we'll always be subject to the three point five percent cap before it goes to citizen vote. That doesn't change anything.
But by, by you taking and moving this fund, that money that was collected for that fund that is now subtracted from the property tax revenue and moved to another fund, is it now because it's been removed from that fund that allows it to be reducing the property tax revenue brought in by the city, is it going to allow them to collect the additional one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars before they reach the three point five percent cap?
I see what you're getting at, I think what you're, what we're doing is going to the citizens to ask them by ballot, by popular vote, what you're talking about in your comment, that the citizens need to be allowed, need to be allowed to decide where their sales tax go. So it's up to the citizens at this point, we're simply, the agenda item tonight is to discuss and take appropriate action, we're not deciding anything tonight, we're simply looking at the options and having our city staff come back with, and our city attorney come back with what needs to happen to go forward based on our feedback. But nothing gets approved tonight, it all goes to the citizens no matter what, just like the citizens approved the CCPD fund. We can simply chat about what we feel the best allocation would be for that half cent. If, we may decide tonight to not, to not touch it, we haven't had that discussion yet, so.
Okay, well, thank, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Uh, next person I have is Mike Stenbridge.
Yes, good evening. Uh, I'd like to talk about agenda item resolution number twenty twenty dash fifty-six, authorizing applications for the FEMA FY twenty FMA grant to elevate homes, excuse me. Um, as you already know, my wife and I and our child flooded, tax day flood, April seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. Um, we've been begging for a FEMA city elevation since then, pretty much. Uh, we were in the first round, then we were notified that we would be second round. Then it's just, um, I don't know, we were told we could be elevated in the future or if it was just no round. Now there's a tiers issue, they're considering a tier zone on our block with our home in it, which we don't agree with. We can see that somebody, uh, you know, who had a plot or had a plan or had a house picked out already and had money to do that uh, in a comparable area that they could pay the extra, that's not us. So for the people that have to stay, there's really no benefit to the tiers, other than to have to pay an increment, which could be taxation without representation if there's no service provided for the people that stay. My wife and I are very curious about where that increment money would, I know this is a different subject, where that increment money would go, who would receive it, what board members would receive it, what they would spend it on. But let's get back to twenty twenty fifty-six, I'm sorry, I got a horrible allergy headache right now, I'm just trying to concentrate and stay focused, it's difficult. Um, so thirty homes are proposed to be elevated or Mr. Belize is going to apply for them with FEMA. And these are being broken up into two groups of fifteen, which sounds smart, uh, because that's a better tactic. Evidently, somebody's done some research and figured out what gets approved. I had an interesting conversation with Councilman Warren one time about BCA and BCR. And I'm probably screwing this up, but benefit cost analysis, benefit cost ratio, that the city tries to create a good mix or of risk in homes that it puts into an elevation round or packet. The agenda explains that the packet can put homes that fall below one point of benefit cost analysis, BCR, or BCR, I'm sorry, into the same rounder package as a lower risk home that falls above a one point oh or high, and in order to weigh out or equal out to average to a one point oh, I think was the goal. I'm probably screwing this all up, uh, to, for the desired number for FEMA. Now, that's in your agenda packet, you know, I didn't go ask around or beat around the bush or anything. I saw that in your agenda, y'all's agenda packet. Okay, so, it leads me to believe that we could have put, been put, well, we were put into first and second round. So since we could be a lower risk home, put into a home with maybe a lower risk home on Seattle, lower risk home on St. Helier, et cetera, uh, and some medium risk homes and then some high risk homes, uh, why weren't we? And I'm, I've been racking my head all day long, I've been thinking, why, why wouldn't we have been? And it's over four years, and now it's like the tiers is being used to give those who can afford to move their little way out and it benefits the builder because the builder gets the house demoed by the city and saves that, uh, you know, profit cost. But it doesn't benefit anyone else, um, who has to stay, who can't afford to buy for their market value at a comparable neighborhood, a comparable area, a comparable home. So I'm wondering, are we in that round? I, we haven't received anything, uh, my wife hasn't. So we're assuming that we are, the streets that I saw in the packet, which was very dirty and very well-written, were Seattle, Crawford, Tinbury Wall, Elwood, Hawaii, Capri, Tahoe, Acapulco, Jersey, Colwin, North Tahoe, and Juneau, if I'm not mistaken. I see Jersey, but I don't see East Jersey. And I also almost forgot, uh, that Mr. Belize or you all or whoever said that the goal is to elevate every single flood home in Jersey Village out of harm's way. Uh, and it may take seven to ten years or nine rounds, and we haven't heard anything about East Jersey being included in that. We don't know if being forced into a tiers is going to affect our ability to be attractive in a FEMA application with lower risk homes, medium risk homes, uh, and FEMA is going to say, well, what's this tier zone, what is this? Uh, if we try to sell on the free market, are we going to have to disclose that we're in a tiers? I'm sorry to go off on tiers, but it kind of affects this resolution number because as far as we know, we're not including these thirty homes. And we've asked repetitively, and we don't know, are we going to be included in a future round, um, to get out of harm's way? And, you know, if not that, then we'll have to stay and, you know, we can't afford to move and are we going to have to pay tiers increment? I don't, I don't.
Thank you, Mike, that's, that's five minutes.
Yes, Mayor.
Really quick, I'll, I'll ask on your behalf, Austin, in your FEMA application, is there any part of the application where you have to disclose if these homes are any terrors or not?
No, sir.
Okay. Um.
And if I may, Mayor, I, I just want to, related to this agenda item, uh, Mike, you mentioned that you get no benefit out of this if you have no interest in the turf zone. Well, that's not true. The, the point of the memo, and you brought this up yourself, the multiple years based on the snail's pace that it will take us based on FEMA guidelines and all of the constraints we're under mean that, you know, there are, because we have a lot of homes that we have to get to and we can only really submit them in a competitive nature and small batches, if we can get some of those homes that are eligible for an elevation and if they can be removed from the floodplain through some other means, that reduces the number of homes that we need to elevate and that means that we can get to other homes sooner than we would otherwise. I get that you want to be one of the very first ones, everyone wants to be in the first group or the second group or as soon as possible. Uh, the reality is we can't, uh, if, if, if we move you up, that means somebody else has to move back. And there's a reason why this is going through a very unbiased, very, this is a mathematical process on a spreadsheet. And, and I get that people whose homes have flooded, they're not just numbers on a page. But in order to pursue this funding and in order to get this done as quickly as we can, we have to go through this process. And we're, we're trying our best here and we understand that some people are going to be, uh, are going to have to wait longer than others. And unfortunately, that's just the reality of the situation. Uh, but, uh, the terrors will help because you see in this that, that there are a lot of homes we've got to get through. So if we can reduce that number by giving them another avenue, that means potentially everyone else can get this done faster.
Well, we don't see any benefit to the terrors other than, you know, we, we just been waiting for an elevation so long, and then we see all these new streets thrown in there, like Tinbury, Seattle. Seattle, I could see would maybe be to level out.
Mike, people on Tinbury flooded too. I mean, it, it, it's just, we have to look at this moving target from FEMA. FEMA, every year, we don't have the same amount of funds, we don't, not the same amount of cities that apply. It, it's a moving target every single year, and we just got denied from last year's application. So we're trying to do it smarter so that people can, can move up. If, if there are homes that, that you may not feel are fair on Tinbury, then I, I encourage you to go to Tinbury Street and talk to my friends who live on Tinbury who flooded on the tax day flood, just like you did and I did, and say, I deserve it more than you. It's, it's not the way that it works. It is a number that we have to give to FEMA, we have to apply properly, it is not going to be done fast. We are looking, all we're doing tonight is discussing, uh, this application process, learning, learning what we made mistakes in, in the, in the past. Actually, we've done a really good job because we've been approved for, for several rounds, this is the first time we've ever not made a round.
Still not us, still, and, and you could have put us in because the BCA and BCR, we're lower BCA, BCR, but we could have been included with lower risk homes. That's how Austin prepares a package, are you telling me you couldn't have put us back in, Andy? Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Mitchum.
Mike, you're, you're talking about something that we haven't even gotten to yet, we haven't even discussed the agenda item yet, we have to get to that, and you're talking about the.
I don't believe you.
Talking about the terrors, and tomorrow, I believe we're having a town hall about it. So you're asking questions about the town hall that we can answer there, but you're, you're talking about an application for a hundred, if you look at, when we get to it, we'll look.
We're talking about elevations here.
I know, and I'm talking about that right now. On, on the agenda item, if you go through the packet, there's a hundred and sixty-something homes that we've identified, even after all the flood mitigation things that we're doing, once it's all done, they're still at risk, my home, uh, a lot of people's homes.
Mr. Belize was told to put us back, that's what I believe now, we would have been in a BCA, BCR, he could do it, but you told him, you all, you, Andy, and possibly Justin Ray and city council, y'all kicked us out, he's doing his job.
Right now is you're having.
With a BCA, BCR.
And I think that we need to cut you off because you're going off on a tantrum, if you're not going to be civil about anything, if you're going to go personal on people, then I don't want to talk to you right now, and I don't care, so.
You don't want to give us an elevator.
Cut him off, cut him off, we'll move along, thank you. Citizen comments are for civil discussion, and if you want to get into a temper tantrum about things, I'm not going to have it.
It's sad, does none of us have anything against the guy, it's nothing personal.
There's a reason that this is done through a non-political process, the reason why none of us are involved in the process of picking the individual homes. Because you don't, you don't want, this is not about favorites, this is not, I have no idea who's in the application packet, and that's a good thing because it's being based on a purely just numbers game, trying to get this done as quickly as possible, so.
I see my street on the application list, do I know if I'm on it? No, and I'm the mayor, I don't know, I'm not, I don't, I have no idea, and you know what, I hope other people get it before me. I'm at risk, I flooded as a kid, I flooded in tax day flood. I hope other people benefit before I do, that's the type of person that I am, and I'm not going to be upset if someone at Tinbury Street or Hawaii Street or Jersey gets it before I do. It's a community that we're all members of, and we're going to move forward using the rules that are put forth by the people who are handing us the money. We'll move forward now with our meeting. Um, moving along to item D, the city manager report. Anybody have any questions for Austin, actually, before we get to that, Austin, is there anything that you want to introduce any new employees or employee of the month?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, I would just like to recognize Danielle Cordova, the administrative secretary of Republic Works as our October, or sorry, November employee of the month. Uh, the last few months, she's really stepped up, uh, when our Parks and Rec administrative secretary retired back in July, Danielle stepped up, picked up all the slack, uh, in the two departments and really kept everybody moving forward. She was very vital in helping Robert to come on board, um, and making sure that was a smooth transition. She's worked extensively to make sure that both departments run smoothly and that we're very excited for what all the work she's done. She's gone above and beyond and has been very helpful to the entire department, of both departments, and without her contribution, Parks and Rec Department especially would be very far behind. So, we want to recognize Danielle and thank her for all the work she's done.
Excellent, thanks so much. Anybody have any questions for Austin on the city manager report or any comments?
I'd like to comment on that golf course financial report again, I believe this is six months in a row with about forty, fifty thousand dollar net profit on, operating profit.
Excellent, yeah, I've, I've heard fantastic things from a lot of people that have played the course, a lot of people are coming back to try it out for the first time in years and it's, it's, it's definitely, um, gotten a lot more compliments than anything else that I've seen, so, great, great job to that, to the staff. Great job to our police and fire, uh, this month, I know they're still working through, you know, we don't know this, but it's still working through a pandemic and it's difficult to make all this context that they're doing and stay safe, so, thank you all for doing, doing that and for city staff. Uh, you know, all the financials this year look fantastic so, so far, it's, it's incredible. What our city is, is able to do and is doing despite, uh, all the difficulties this, this year, so keep it up, everybody. Uh, any other questions, comments about the city manager report? All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda that a council member would like to see moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second, that was Bobby with the motion and I think that was James Singleton, second. Uh, any more discussion on the topic, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, and abstentions, motion carries. Move into item F, regular session, item one, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash fifty-five, authorizing the city to seek reimbursement for any eligible coronavirus relief fund CRF activity, Austin Bleese, city manager.
Mayor and councillors, back in August, the council approved resolution twenty twenty dash forty, uh, authorizing the inter-local agreement with Harris County and earmarking three hundred thousand dollars of our CRF funds towards local businesses. We've since been informed that the county is not going to be able to spend that money by December thirty-first, the statutory deadline when they have to do so. So we're coming tonight to ask council to modify that to pass resolution twenty twenty dash fifty, authorizing the city to apply for any reimbursable expense, which we would apply for salaries for fire and police, or fire department and police department if we need to, um, and bring the full three hundred and, almost four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars back to the city. If the council is interested, we could look to do our own grant program, um, at a later point in time. Council's interested, we could bring something back in December for them to look at.
Okay, thanks, any questions for Austin?
No, is there, is there a reason why they weren't able to administer the funds for the program?
The, the county, they didn't really give us a great answer, um, I'm, I'm assuming that the number of applications and just the amount of time that they had to do it in, and the limited staff resources they had to do it in.
Yeah, if, if we, if we, um, bring that back in-house and try to administer our own program, would that be a new process? Or would that just take the existing applications?
I think we would start with the ones we have, I don't think we would spend the full three hundred thousand, assuming that's the number council would want to go with, and we could open it back up again. With what's coming down, all the news about COVID and hospital rates and that type of thing, um, it's, it's possible that we could see another, you know, stay-home order, that type of thing. So it's possible that even more businesses in, in the coming months could need assistance, so. I think we could definitely be flexible and make it however flexible the council wants.
Austin, Austin, in the back and forth of the county about, about this, any indication about funding in twenty twenty-one?
No, that would take congressional action, um, which, we have no idea what's going to happen there. Yeah, thank you.
So, um, just, you know, I read through this in the packet yesterday and, and my thought is, um, you know, I don't know if a lot of businesses can survive another shutdown, uh, without some help. Um, and, and I'm hoping, you know, with my businesses, we, we got through, my wife's business, we got through with the PPP when it came through with Congress, but again, we don't really, can't really guarantee that, this is, this is money that we already have allocated, so. I, I personally, I don't know how we would do this, but I would personally love to see, uh, this come back in-house and, uh, whatever we can't allocate, uh, whatever we find can't be allocated towards reimbursable expenses for the city, I would really like for that to be used towards small business assistance. And if it, you said there was basically a December thirty-first deadline for allocating these funds, is, would we be able to go beyond that? We just allocated it to our own fund?
So, so what, what we would do is we would, uh, apply for reimbursement for all of our, all, all of our eligible funds and bring that in, that's our money. We would use other general fund revenues, um, to create this grant, because this would be four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that was unbudgeted. So we would do a budget amendment and we could do a, a budget amendment to the grants and incentives line in a similar amount or whatever amount council wants to do to create that program. Um, I'd have to work with the city attorneys to, you know, really kind of hammer out the details of how that would work on the legal side, um, but I'm sure they can help with that.
So Austin, just, just to clarify, what you're saying is the amount in, in this resolution that we're asking for reimbursement, we've effectively already spent on eligible expenses for FEMA?
Correct.
Or for COVID, okay.
Yes, sir, yep.
Well, I, I don't have a vote in this, but my, my personal feeling is just as a business owner, uh, another shutdown coming down the pipe would, would devastate a lot of our smaller businesses, uh, here in the city. And, and I would love to see something put aside to help if, if that were, if that were to happen again. I think, I think it'd benefit everybody by saving those businesses, not only for the character of the neighborhood and of, obviously those business owners, but sales tax base. Um, you know, if we can come out the other side of COVID, um, positive, that'd be, uh, you know, and a positive economic stance, that'd be better. I don't know if anybody has any other comments on that?
No, I, the, we initially sent this money off with the thought of we had already spent these expenses, this was not a whole lot of money to us, let's send it on towards the businesses. I don't think we should take a action until we get the application. I don't think we should take a action until we get the applicants and see if there were any. At this point, the county can't even tell us anything about if a business in Jersey Village even applied. They, they don't know anything. So until the county can provide us information on the applicants, I don't see us moving forward with a process set up to spend the money. Right now, let's reimburse our expenses. And then later on, we identify an amount to go forward with a new program.
I would agree.
But I, I, I agree with the sentiment and would like to support the businesses.
Likewise.
Yeah, I, I think even though we couldn't get the county to administer it, the fact that the, the Treasury Department really made it easy for us to be able to make the claims on the reimbursements just kind of gives us, buys us that additional time. You know, it's, it's, it doesn't, you know, at the end of the day, as long as we get the check for the amount, then, and as long as it's not something, you know, it's, it's being considered something we've already, that we've received for reimbursement, but we can turn around and reallocate that, that funding elsewhere as needed. So, yeah. I, I like that because it gives us some flexibility, even if we have to administer ourselves.
Okay. Austin, we're, I guess, the, the action is to, to approve the resolution. Is, is everybody, everybody made their comments and, and given their feedback to Austin about this? So I'm looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move to approve resolution number 2020-55.
Second.
It's a motion by Bobby Warren and a second by Drew Lawson. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries. Move into item number two, F2, consider resolution number 2020-56, authorizing applications for the FEMA FY FMA grant to elevate homes. Austin Blais, city manager.
Mayor and councillors, thank you. Can you see my, the PowerPoint there?
Yes, yes.
Great. All right. So tonight we have the 2020 application for the FMA. How it works FEMA set aside approximately ninety million dollars. Once again, this year, that's the same amount they've done in previous years for things like home elevations and acquisitions and acquisitions, those types of things. For elevations, just a reminder, FEMA pays seventy-five percent of the cost to elevate homes that are in the floodplain. If that home is repetitive loss, they pay ninety percent and one hundred percent of the cost of your repetitive loss. The repetitive losses have incurred damage on two occasions in which the repairs exceeded twenty-five percent of the market value of the structure. The second time of the, there had to be flood insurance in place and it contained the increased costs of compliance. SRL has four claims, all of them more than five thousand dollars. And two of them needed to cumulatively exceed the amount of the market value. And that makes, if, if that's the case, that makes it a high priority in this SRL category. So elevations is they're one of the most common retrofitting methods that you see around. We've had eight, seventeen go up right now. We've got another four that we're waiting on the contract for. The base flood elevation is the one hundred year flood and almost any home can be elevated. The project has to be cost effective. BCA's benefit cost analysis are done on all the homes to come up with a benefit cost ratio or BCR. And then to be eligible, you have to have a flood insurance at the time of the notice of funding opportunity is issued. That's a FEMA requirement that came out, I believe it was. I think you had to have flood insurance in place by October 1st this year. So benefit cost analysis, that's the procedure that assesses the cost effectiveness of a hazard mitigation measure by taking a long-term view of the avoided future damages as compared to the cost of the project. Now, the benefit cost ratio is that numerical expression that comes from that BCA. So the sum of all the projects, they must have a positive benefit cost ratio. It's a very competitive national grant program. The higher benefit cost ratios that we have, the more competitive will be. But still, at the end of the day, there's no guarantee for an award. And when we did not receive a, when we did not receive an award last year, we reached out to FEMA for some more information. They were, they didn't give us anything. The state seemed a little bit surprised that we weren't funded and others were funded ahead of us. So it's, it's still not a guarantee of how, how everything happens. So the city needs to make the application by November 25th to the state. The state reviews the applications. They'll make sure everything is included. If we're missing anything, they'll let us know. We'll, we'll get that information to them. The state makes the application to FEMA by January 28th, and we don't expect to hear anything from FEMA until late May. So there's about a hundred and sixty-five homes that have been identified for potential elevation. These are homes are ones that have flooded multiple times and ones that are most susceptible to flooding and future events after the other flood mitigation projects, BIRM, the E100 project, all of those street drainage improvements, all that's been completed. So we took all of those homes, we did a preliminary cost, a benefit cost analysis on them. That BCA showed us where those homes would be at. The results gave us the BCR. So a project is considered cost effective when the BCR is 1.0 or greater, or greater. So if a BCR is at one, that means the costs and benefits are equal. If the value is greater than one, that means the benefits are greater than the cost. If it's less than one, it means the project costs more than the benefits. So the BCA information that we used, we compiled all that into a big spreadsheet, a hundred and sixty-five people in there. And we, we used math to come up with the greatest number of groups to have the best BCR that we could. So based upon learning things that we learned last year through the grant application and this year as well, the most that we expect to reasonably fund it is about twenty homes. That means for a hundred and sixty-five homes, it's going to be seven to ten years of applications to apply forever. So for this year, we're looking at, we're recommending two applications. And this was done based upon the conversations that we had with the grant administrator from the past. Other communities, like the city of Houston, they have done multiple grant applications over the years or in, in one year. And sometimes they all get funded and sometimes they don't. So it seems like it comes down to the number of homes and the total dollar amount. So for the application number one, that's sixteen homes with a BCR of 1.37. Total project cost of that is four point eight million dollars with the federal cost share being just over four point four and the local share being three hundred and eighty-eight, nine ninety-seven. For application number two, we're looking at fourteen homes with a BCR of 1.34. The total project's expected to be four point nine, federal cost share, that's going to be four point four, and the local cost share will be four hundred and eighty, just, just under four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So these are the straits that we're looking for. All of the people that have been, that we've identified and are, are including in this grant, they've all been notified. We've worked with them over the last few weeks to make sure we had all of the information as well. And that's really where this, this comes from. So if people haven't heard anything, that means they're not in the grant process. Just a reminder, this is very competitive grant process. It's possible that one application can be funded and the other might not be. It's possible that both could be funded. There's really no way for us to know. And there's really very little, if any, feedback from FEMA as to their reasoning as to why they, they fund ones and not others. So looking into the future, the E100 projects that's starting construction soon changes the outlook a little bit. It will change the flood maps and could change the floodway, making more homes eligible, eligible for mitigation reconstruction. If we want to look at that, we're, FEMA may or may not change the regulations on that one. It might be a little more advantageous in the future. Today, we don't know. The ALIS 14 rainfall amounts will also cause the flood maps to be reworked. So several areas around us are seeing tear down, tear down and rebuild for storm damaged homes. It seems that trend is moving our way as well. So that's something to take into consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions for Austin?
Yeah, on the BCRs, you had one, 1.34, 1.37. Is there a sweet spot that, you know, a rule of thumb that, that, that kind of guides you to, as to what number to hit?
Nobody really gives you a, a firm number. So if, in the absence of a firm number from FEMA or the state, I talk with fellow managers of other cities in the area and see what they're doing. And I try to beat their BCRs. So that's really kind of, you know, that 1.2 to 1.3 is where a lot of them are. So I feel like if we can beat that, it increases our chances. But nobody's really said you have to have a BCR of, you know, 1.1 or 1.0 or whatever that is. I just try to beat the competition.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Austin, this is the first time we've tried the, the two grants.
Correct.
And, and you don't see significant in the anecdotally and your, your research, this doesn't hurt. It may, it doesn't help necessarily. Each one is weighed independently. They don't say, oh, Jersey Village had two. We're going to like this one. They're all, all the grant apps are reviewed independently. Is that right?
Correct. And that was one of the, one of the questions I asked is, you know, I don't want to do something that's going to jeopardize both applications. We want to make sure that we can hopefully get funded for at least one. And if we only, if so many more than one would jeopardize that, I would only bring one to council. So from what we've heard, from what I've heard, what I've been told, it, it won't jeopardize that either way. They'll look at, look at both equally. And like I said, other cities have applied for more than one in a grant round and had that funded.
Austin, can you talk a little bit about, so we, we obviously are focusing on BCR because that's a big part of, of, of what goes into an application as far as how FEMA evaluates it. If, if you have two homes that, if you compared them and said, I could pick this one or this one to put it in there, and either way, the BCR would remain the same. Are, are both of those homes on equal footing as far as the application? Or are there other factors regarding an individual home that might affect the success of, of a given application besides BCR?
So typically, BCR is the, a big piece. The other one is the RL or SRL. If, if a home is SRL, and if it's had the cumulative total of more than the market value, that is the, the strongest preferred. So that does help your grant applications. When you can do an SRL two, as it's called, bring those into the grant applications, that does help it a little bit. Because that is the, the number one priority for FEMA based upon their notice of funding opportunity. But outside of that, if, if you just have repetitive loss or severe repetitive loss and you don't have that number two priority status, which is, it means your home hasn't flooded as, as bad as some others, you're kind of on an equal footing.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Austin?
Austin, can you back up to that E100 comment you had? Maybe a screen or two back.
Yeah, so the E100 project, once that's done, it will still be probably four to five years before the flood maps are rewritten, with that project effectively in there. But that could impact how the, the flood maps run. I mean, it could bring some homes out of the flood, flood plain. It could bring some homes out of the floodway. It, we're not really sure how it's going to impact the flood maps just yet.
Well, that was my question because your, your second line there says making more homes eligible for mitigation reconstruction than are eligible for today. And I was thinking that, that kind of means that the E100 project is going to make flooding more likely to happen.
No, so mitigation reconstruction, that's, that's like essentially a FEMA funded tear down and rebuild. And mitigation reconstruction, FEMA does not fund those in the floodway. So if the floodway changes and shrinks, that would make some homes that are currently in the floodway, not in the floodway, would make them eligible for that FEMA funded tear down rebuild.
Okay, that's the explanation I was looking for. Now, on another part, you had said something about these three projects. Can you go back to that screen?
This one?
Uh, no, it's, you listed it. In, in the calculation of the BCR, three projects that are waiting to be completed. There. No, I'm sorry. Go back one more.
I think the only time it was mentioned was in that one slide we just talked about.
Yeah, this one?
No, it was a comment, it was a clause in the, in the statement. Well, anyway, what it mattered to is if E100, what I, I got out of it was that if the E100 project was completed and Wall Street BIRM completed and the street repairs and improvements, that.
Here it is.
So, so the, the hundred and sixty-five homes that we're, you know, essentially looking at for the long term, these are one hundred and sixty-five homes that have flooded multiple times, and it also has homes in there that would still be susceptible to flooding when all of the other projects are completed.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's the part that's bothering me because I'm looking at the streets that you've included. And I would think that some of those streets are going to be much less likely to flood after these projects are done.
And it certainly could be. We have, like I said, it's going to be about four to five years before we see any flood maps that show how the, the flood plans have, will have changed with any of these projects.
That's, it's very careful. I understand. I mean, it says it right there. They're identified for potential elevation. We don't really know what's going to happen five, 10 years down the road, because this is a long-term flood mitigation project, long-term. So a hundred and sixty-five homes have been identified using the flood study modeling that, that has been done. But again, the ATLAS 14 rainfall totals have, have changed some of the eligibility. Who knows down the road if there's a, there's a different rainfall model that, that we're, that we have to use. So, you know, this is always changing. We, we can't really predict how the, how FEMA is going to model flood plains in the future with not only, not only things happening here, but things happening outside of Jersey Village. So.
I understand all that. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding the statement correctly.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of streets on that, on that list. And, and, you know, if you look at a map, though, they're all surrounding the Bayou Channel. And, and it's the potential for flooding, really, everybody in Jersey Village should have flood insurance because there's the potential for really bad things happening. But, you know, those are homes that are identified even after the BIRM and, and the street drainage and E100, which is really focused on the west side of the city. Any other questions for Austin on this? All right.
I can just add, you know, it's, it's always tough to try and come up with the list and, and using numbers, taking names and everything out of it is, is the only way to do it. You have to look at, at numbers and separate out the rest of it.
I don't understand. I mean, it's.
Toughest part of, of the whole application process, because I know there's going to be people that aren't happy. And it's, 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 it's tough.
You know, we have to make decisions as an entire community. We're not making decisions for individuals. All of us, all of us, or most people on council have either have flooded at some point or been impacted by flooding at some point. We don't know if we're on the list. We don't, we don't know. We have, all have very good friends in the city that have been impacted by flooding. We don't know who's on the list and who's not. And I know that if we take a Jersey Village community-wide approach to this, is we're going to be more successful long-term. And, and we have, you have to go slow. You have to be smart about it and you have to remove emotion from it. And I'm, you're doing a good job, Austin. I understand. We are not in the job of making everybody happy. We, we, we have to make sure that we're doing our smart decisions for the city. And, you know, FEMA kind of doesn't really care who, who any of us are or who, who's, who's in what home. It, it's a number to them and we have to play by those rules. And you have to do that. And so keep, keep it up.
I'd just like to make a comment. The, I mean, Greg was on council back in 2001 is when he first got elected. Tropical Storm Allison hit and he got his indoctrination into the flood issue. We have so many more options going now. And, and just discussing this issue tonight shows how much better off we are as a city than what we were nineteen years ago or 20 years ago. And I'm just thinking that this is cause for optimism, if nothing else.
Well, we also have to make sure that, that we're happy for everyone who receives relief from this. It's, but the understanding too, that it's going to take a long time. It's a long-term strategy. And, and it's a moving target every year is very, very difficult. And so looking outside the box, like we're going to have the discussion tomorrow at the town hall. It's, it's tomorrow, right, Austin?
Correct, yes.
So we're going to have a discussion at the town hall tomorrow to see if there's maybe not one of these outside the box solutions that may move faster and be a better solution, better fit for some homeowners is, is the right option. And so I'm, I'm hopeful to, you know, talk to those people. It's always better to talk to those folks in, in person and get, get their thoughts and their, their feelings on the, on the subject. So you're, you're doing a great job. So keep, keep it up. Any other questions, comments, concerns about this agenda item? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-56.
Second.
Second.
I had a motion by Greg Holden and second, Gary Wobenhorst beat you to it. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Uh, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, an extensions, motion carries? Let's move us into item number three, consider ordinance number twenty twenty s twenty-six, continuing a mayoral declaration of local disaster. Uh, Austin?
Mayor and councilors, this ordinance would extend the current declaration, which is set to expire on December first. Um, the ordinance as drafted would automatically expire on January nineteenth, or if the governor cancels the, his orders sooner. If the council wishes to end the declaration before January nineteenth, um, staffs provide two options for the council can consider. One, um, the city can seek reimbursement for expenses through the end of this fiscal year. So having the ordinance expire on January first would be an option. Um, that should allow us to at least claim any additional expenses we might have. Um, although I don't know that we would need any, you know, any additional time, I feel with, especially with salaries, we've like already hit the number that we need to. Or the council could choose to not extend this ordinance, at which point the current declaration would just end on December first.
Okay. Any questions for Austin?
Austin, I know last time when we considered the extension, there was um, some talk about uh, removing a few items regarding um, late fees on water bills and, and uh, sort of uh, letting um, you know, past due bills kind of sit and wait. Uh, have we reached out to the, well, I guess first uh, how many property owners do we still have with outstanding balances related to this? And have we reached out to try to get that resolved before we left this?
Right. So I believe there's about eighteen, seventeen, something in, something there. Um, and I know that uh, the utility billing clerk has mailed out um, late notices reminding people that they do have a past due water bill.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I, I just want to make sure that uh, whatever we do, that we give people enough notice to, to, you know, not have you know, six, seven, eight months worth of bills drop in their lap immediately due uh, without much notice.
Right. Yeah, no, it's, we've, we've continued to inform people when they're past due. Um, the only thing we've really stopped is, you know, turning them off.
Okay. Um, so basically this, this um, ordinance uh, expires on um, December first, it says?
So the, the one that's currently in place expires on December first.
So this, this ordinance would make it expire on January nineteenth. And so we would have the city council meeting immediately before it to make the decision to extend it or not.
Correct.
Okay. Any, any council members have many, have any questions about this? I mean, to me, I think it's wise to go ahead and extend it to the nineteenth of January, so we have that meeting right before to, to reassess and see. I, I do see, I mean, we're all, we're all watching this, we're all watching these trends of COVID uh, potentially coming, coming back and spiking even more um, than, than before. So to me, it seems like the wise thing to do, just let it go until, or extend it until the nineteenth. That's just my, my two cents. I would agree. Let's keep, keep, keep making sure that the, the residents who are behind on their bills are, are ki- are informed. Um, and they have every opportunity to, to, to catch up before we, before it expires potentially. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, looking for a motion?
I move, we approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six.
Ordin- ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-six.
Correction, ordinance number twenty two, twenty di- dash twenty-six.
Thank you. I have motion and a second. James Singleton with the second. Uh, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries? All right, we'll move on to item number four, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the city of Jer- Jersey Village sales tax allocations. City manager Austin Lees.
Mayor and councilors, thank you. Uh, currently today, uh, the city has a two percent local sales tax. It's collected in three pieces. Uh, one percent is a general revenue, half percent is a property tax relief, which also goes to the general fund. And then a half cent, or you have sent dedicated to the crime control district. Um, back in nineteen sixty-nine, the city adopted the one percent general sales tax revenue, and then ninety-five, the city adopted the half cent property tax relief sales tax. The crime control was last reauthorized in twenty thirteen. Um, previous to uh, uh, twenty fifteen, the, you could only make a, a sales tax, an election with a one-eighth percent, and you cannot combine any, anything more than two percent. So in other words, the city with an existing one percent general revenue sales tax may now order an election to increase or decrease that tax amount. Previously, you're going to go above that, assuming there is room under the total two percent local sales cap for any potential increases. Um, and in two thousand and five, since two thousand and five, cities can do this all in one combined ballot proposition. So with the most recent changes in twenty nineteen that the state legislature made to property tax rate calculations, the half-cent portion of our city's sales tax, called the property tax relief, um, cuts into the property tax rate, since revenues from the sales tax rate for the property tax are subtracted from the city's known revenue rate and voter approval rate. So that has the, the effect of decreasing property tax revenue by an equivalent amount. Um, to answer the question earlier from, from public comments, I don't think the city council would increase property taxes by one point nine million um, and continue to raise it even higher than that. I, I think we're still looking at the same overall budget numbers that we, we have been. Um, so I, I just, I don't see that coming from a budgetary point of view. So because of that change though, um, we've looked at ways to modify the sales tax allocation if the council wants to do that. Um, we've broken down how much an eighth percent of the sales tax uh, would be based upon our twenty nineteen sales tax collection. And there are several options the city has. If the council wanted to maintain the most flexibility with our sales tax, we can move that all into the general revenue sales tax. That means that we'll all go to the general fund, the council would set the budget priorities as we do every year during the budget season. Another option would be an economic development sales tax, a portion of it can be dedicated to economic development. Type B, and that's detailed more in the TML exhibits that we provided. Economic development sales tax, the city uh, does not spend the sales tax proceeds. Instead, the city would create an economic corporation that's governed by a board of directors. Um, they'd be responsible for deciding how to spend the proceeds of that. The twenty sixteen um, comp plan discussed at Economic Development Corporation, the current comp plan update committee is discussing uh, Economic Development Corporation, and it's something that uh, both parties or both groups, when looking at the comp plan, have seemed to recommend. So, uh, the council does have a sort of veto power over that corporation, so there is, there's still that. One uh, smaller piece of it um, is a fire control prevention and emergency services districts. This is a, a piece that I have to admit, I didn't know much about until Lori uh, informed me about it. Um, there's only a limited number of cities across the state that are even eligible for this one. But it uh, it allows you to levy a sales tax similar to a crime control district, but for fire control purposes. Eligible costs include personnel administration, you know, capital expenses to fire stations, equipment, um, fire apparatus, emergency communications and several other things. But this is another option that would dedicate it towards the fire control. And then there's the street maintenance, a portion could be dedicated for that. Um, that has to be spent on repairing and maintaining existing streets and sidewalks. And that sales tax revenue would need to be uh, re- reauthorized by the voters every ten years. And of course, we, we could always allocate more money to the uh, crime control prevention district. That's something the council is very familiar with as well. So, we did include um, more information from TML. Um, they do give a lot of great information as to each sales tax. We put a link there to the authorizing statute for the fire control district as well. So this tonight is really just for discussion from the council, um, to see if the council wishes to make any changes uh, to our sales tax um, or not. Um, any change that the council would like to see would need to be approved by the voters in May. Um, you can make a change in any one-eighth increment that the council thinks is necessary, subject to voter approval, of course. So really tonight, we're just looking for council feedback to see if there's any changes that the council might want to make in any of the allocations that we have. And then we can move forward accordingly, uh, for any necessary agenda items and documents for future council meetings.
Great. Thank you, Austin. Um, I guess, uh, I mean, I'm sure everybody read through this in a packet and kind of thought about it and, and has their own custom allocation. I, I have my own custom one in my mind, but uh, uh, yeah, my, my question for open up to council members, my question would be that the crime control prevention district, some of these require a ten-year reauthorization. Is that all of them, or is it just the street maintenance one?
The street maintenance is set for ten years and Scott, um, the crime control, Scott, you're on mute.
Scott, you're on, you're on mute.
Still on mute, Scott.
Scott.
Excuse me, I have to get the cursor in the right box.
Okay.
I don't think that they uh, all have the same ten-year period. ESDs, I, I thought maybe four years. I have to go back and look at the statutes. And then some, uh, there's no time limit. So it, it varies from depending upon the statute. There's different timeframes for different uh, sales tax.
Right. My, my only concern, the, the reason I ask is, is, you know, if we were to propose a ballot, a ballot item to, for example, split that um, split everything up to, you know, we, we basically have one, one cent going to, or one percent going to general revenue. And we have another, another one percent that, right now, half of that goes to crime control prevention di- district. And, and I know in the past, we've talked about that district is doing really, really well with our sales tax being what it is to the point where we may s- want to reallocate that from a half cent down to a maybe a quarter of a, a quarter of a cent or quarter of a, a percent. So I, what I'm seeing on my screen when I was reading this yesterday was, there's actually four different things that we can do here with this one percent. And if we were to split it, just throwing this out there, if we were to split it one-fourth each to each, each of these things, because I see these four things as what our community is asking for. These are top priorities in our community. Um, would there be a risk of, you know, we, we reauthori- the voters reauthorized crime control prevention district in two thousand and thirteen? I believe they, how long is that reauthorized for?
The, the twenty thirteen one was, it was a ten-year.
Ten-year? So, so would it, would we be able to, for example, propose a ballot item that preempted that ten years in order to reallocate everything? One-fourth, 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 one-fourth? Or is that, once you, once the voters say ten years, we have to wait till twenty twenty-three to, to propose any changes to that district? That'd be my
I don't think the statute precludes you from calling an election earlier to extend it beyond the ten-year period.
Okay.
So you, you could, you could kind of arrange it earlier.
Hey, I just wanted to ask that before we all start talking about what we need to do. We just need to sort of get the base understanding of where we are now and what is the possibility in, you know, if we do propose something going forward. Um, uh, reading through this, if you were to ask the general population, voters of Jersey Village, what the priorities of the city are, all four of these things are up there. Um, and so I would, you know, but then also, there's the option of just putting in general revenue, and then the voters put us or somebody else in, into council. And we go, they go through the budget process and allocate it accordingly. Um, you know, so there's, there's pros and cons to all of this. My own personal thought is, I do like, I do like the fact that the voters can really have a say in how this part of the sales tax revenue is, is split up. And I, I think we've seen a, a huge success story with the crime control prevention district in Jersey Village. We are by far the safest community in the region because of it. And um, we were able to recruit better officers, a better police chief, I'm plugging you there's two bricks. Uh, you know, we're able, we're able to, to do that, and that's definitely, if, if you talk to people in the city, that's a top priority, and we need to keep it that way. But then also, you'll, you'll find fire control and prevention, EMS, economic development, street maintenance, that's something we constantly hear about sidewalks and streets, and we're an aging community that needs to keep up with that. So um, I just want to throw that all, all out there before we open it up. So I'll, I'll go ahead and open it up to anyone who has a, has a, a thought.
Hey, real quick, Andrew, just to clarify your statements, are you saying the four big areas you're talking about are, are crime control, um, the emergency services district, economic development, and then street maintenance?
Correct, yes, yes. So we, we basically have an option of either putting it all in general revenue or doing the other four, or doing some sort of split with, with, with all of that. So um, you know, having been involved with the budget process over the last five years, you know, our sales tax and property tax revenue, the general fund receives all of that. Um, a- and then really going, and that kind of comes off from that right now is, is the crime control prevention district. So I don't see uh, you know, I, I, I think this would be a, a really great way for the citizens to give their input on what the priorities are and where that money goes. So.
I get some clarification on this from Austin, or maybe Scott. Um, the property tax relief part of the sales taxes. Uh, basically, uh, th- that's just a categor- categorization that I assume was created by the legislature. Uh, does it have a purpose tied to it, or? It's just uh, I mean, why would you call it property tax relief?
There was a requirement to, to reduce your tax, property tax uh, based upon the sales tax revenue that was collected.
Okay, but uh, at this point, from what I'm seeing, if you transferred this to some other allocation, what you're impacting is the calculation of that, what's it called now?
The, the cap, the year-over-year cap and increasing the uh, property tax revenue intake.
Yeah, not the name I was looking for, but that's, that's about it. That's, that's right. Yeah. So that's the impact that we're having, right?
It would, it would permit the city to collect additional sales tax revenue without reducing the property tax, yes.
Is that property tax relief part of the sales tax, re- uh, reducing property taxes?
I- i- if the voters approve additional sales tax, then that, it would be additional revenue that you would have, that would come in. And it do- and it doesn't directly impact your ad valorem tax rate or ad valorem tax revenues.
Okay, so the property tax relief piece of the sales tax is impacting your ad valorem revenues right, at this point, right?
It, it initially i- impacted them over time. Uh, I, I think there's a disconnect, and I, that's not my, that's not my strong point. Uh, I, I would defer more to Art in my, my office, but I don't believe that uh, it's to, I, I just say, I'm not sure.
Uh, it's an important point to me.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Okay, so um, when we do truth in taxation calculation, one part of that is important, is that we have to add the half a penny to the calculation on the truth in taxation. And yes, it does um, affect the revenues that you collect on property taxes. Because you have to put that part of the equation in the calculation and truth in taxation.
But I think that that, I, I think that upon approval of a sales tax increase, does that basically backs back out?
E- exactly. If we were to remove this property tax relief and allocate that money somewhere else, that's not going to change our ad valorem tax rate.
No, it'd only change at what point we'd have to call the, the election. Is that true?
It, it changed your calculation on your tax rate, because um, when um, when you add that part of the uh, half, half a penny of the sales tax to the calculation on truth in taxation, it does reduces the, the tax rate that, that we collect on, on property taxes.
So this property tax relief part of the sales tax So this property tax relief part of the sales tax is actually used to reduce the amount of property tax that each homeowner pays.
Correct.
So I think there's an, an important sort of, especially recently, that, that there's a particular reason why the, the way that this is allocated right now might pose some problems going forward. And Austin, correct me if I'm wrong. If I, if I, or Isabel, if we, for example, bring in a new business and part of the, the, the agreement for them to invest in Jersey Village is that we will rebate a certain percentage of the sales tax that they bring in. We have traditionally focused only on the cent and a half that is not part of the crime control and prevention district. And so some percentage of that property tax reduction, half cent is sometimes reimbursed to businesses that we've brought into the city only through the use of that incentive. But for the purpose of the property tax calculation, it doesn't take into account the fact that we did, that we are rebating that money back to a, a business. In other words, we wind up shooting ourselves in the foot. Rather than actual, so, so basically what happens is we either have to dramatically reduce the amount of revenue available to the city or go out to the voters, asking them for a increase in property tax, which isn't even really an increase. It's just the fact that this calculation makes it look like one because the money that was supposed to be used for reducing property taxes was put towards a program that would reduce property taxes by even more in the future by bringing in new business and new sales tax revenue. If we re-characterize that half cent from property tax reduction, we no longer have that restriction placed on us. And I think we've shown that we've been pretty successful on the economic development front. The sales tax revenues have increased dramatically over the last couple of years. And that we've done that even, I, I pulled up my spreadsheet very quickly. The average homeowner, single-family homeowner in Jersey Village is paying in terms of inflation-adjusted dollars, less in property taxes than they were back in 2015. So I, I think we've shown two things, that we can bring new business into the city using the incentive tools that are available at our disposal. But that unless we make this change, it's going to be even more difficult to do that. And that number two, that has still enabled us to keep property taxes very flat over the long term as a result. And that this council has shown a willingness to keep those property taxes pretty flat and in fact, to, to reduce them. So I think that's sort of the whole game right there. We want to make sure that we can continue to bring in those new businesses using those incentive programs that every other city in the state is using. I know there are some people out there that say we shouldn't be using them at all. Well, you know, those businesses are going to go somewhere else to a city where they can. And until the state chooses to preclude that, that's just the reality. I think that's, that's a key thing we need to keep in mind. Now that being said, I've said before that we, that I, I wish that the fire department had a dedicated fund similar to what the police department has. So for me, that's my primary area of interest as far as making this change is that if we are going to ask voters to approve shifting those funds away from dedicated to reducing property taxes, the one thing that I think that they would be okay with having that money go to would be our emergency services and ensuring their continued success. I don't know whether the entire amount should go. We'd really need to look at numbers. But, but as far as the other things and maybe giving it more, I think when we're looking at other things, we'd really need to look at specific numbers as far as what would this look like on paper? And how would, how would a budget look hypothetically under different scenarios where we divided it up further?
Thank you, Bobby. Any other comments?
Austin, I, I, I'm drawing a blank in my brain right now with the 380 agreements and incentive clauses and stuff. We ever, we don't reduce property taxes. We reduce the sales tax, right?
We rebate the, based upon the amount of sales tax that they bring in. But the, the sales tax that we bring in under the, the half cent impacts our property tax calculation as Isabel explained.
No, I understand that. And, and what I guess is that we gain flexibility by reallocating this. We have more control over what we can do with the sales taxes than we do with the ad valorem taxes.
Correct. You have more flexibility. Yes.
Again, I, I'm hearing, I keep getting mixed messages here. Isabel, I'm gonna repeat the question. This property tax relief part of the sales tax is used to reduce homeowners' property tax payout.
Yes, it's used in the calculation of the truth in taxation when we calculate what tax rate we're going to charge on property taxes. So.
Well, I understand that, but you're saying tax rate, but what I want to know is that when they get their property tax bill.
If, when we use that number of the tax, of the sales tax relief fund, yes, it reduces their property tax rate. So of course the other property tax bill is lower. It's a little lower. It's not that much lower, but it's a little lower.
So by reallocating to a different fund or to the, I mean, general fund or whatever other fund, we then are increasing the property taxes of the homeowners.
A, a little bit, yes.
A little bit.
Yeah, yes. But like Bobby wants playing, if we move, let's say we moved a half a penny to the fire for fire prevention, for instance, then when we have a new economic, 380 economic development, we wouldn't have to repay those monies to the company because that goes, that's a a different part, that's not part of our revenue, sales tax revenue. So we don't have to, it's not part of it.
Well, what I'm trying to get to, I, I, I've already pointed out, there's an additional flexibility to what we can do with the sales tax money versus the property tax money. But there seems also that if we make this transfer, that we then should consider lowering property taxes again.
So I want to make sure we're clear here because what she is saying is that this property tax relief, money that comes in from sales tax affects the no new revenue tax rate. So if we were to remove these funds, it would not cause the citizen to pay more in property tax. It would actually lower our ability to collect more in sales tax. Not automatically caused them, it would not automatically cause them to just have to pay more.
But I asked the question twice. I asked the question twice. I got the same answer both times. It does increase their property tax.
No, if I, if I can, if I may, I think there's, if we use some real round numbers here and a real, like kind of just an example. Let's say last year, and these are totally fake numbers, but I just, I think it'd make it easier. Let's say last year we collected.
If I brought up the, would it be helpful?
No, no, I, I want to use fake numbers because if we get into exact figures, this can be super confusing. Let's say last year we brought in $11 million in property tax revenue and that we collected 1 million in, in the half cent property tax reduction sales tax. And that let's suppose that property value stayed exactly the same, our property tax rate, we want to keep the same. Then, so you have 11 million, then 11 million now, 1 million collected for property tax reduction. According to the state of Texas, when we do all of the calculation. So under that scenario, a property owner's tax bill doesn't change, assuming their individual valuation didn't change. But according to the state of Texas, when we do our calculations, we will have increased property taxes by 10%. And the reason for that is because it's not an actual property tax increase. It's this game they play with the math to make it look like that because of the fact that this money over here for the sales tax is supposed to be going towards reducing their property taxes. So we would have to tell the people that we are increasing their taxes by 10% when in fact, it stays exactly the same because they're expecting to take that 1 million, put it in the, into the pot for property taxes and drop that from 11 million to 10 million. So in other words, they're going to treat that 11 million we collected last year, they're going to reduce it by a million because that's how much we clicked in the sales tax for reduction property tax. And that's the number that we're competing against for the current year.
Exactly.
Does that make more sense? It's not an actual property tax increase. Even though the state makes a statement.
It doesn't jive with the answer I got from Isabel.
Yeah, it does. If, if you let her explain it again and pay very close attention, it's no new, no new revenue rate, not.
It's like when you do the calculations, okay, if you, let's say that our new non-new revenue rate is 0.7425. But when you add the calculation of the property tax rate, then the new revenue, non-new revenue rate lowers because you add that $1 million that is, but that was not part of the property tax, but you have to add it to the calculation because it's the half a cent of sales tax that is collected to reduce, reduce property taxes.
So you're saying that their rep, their, their bill changes because the rate changes?
No.
Revenue neutral. The whole thing is revenue neutral. You're just taking
There you go.
Putting it into a different pot. That's it. And, and, and as a result of that, we're able to do more on the property tax side. But it's very, it's revenue neutral, period.
I understand that, Greg. What I don't understand is, I mean, Scott couldn't answer the question. I figured that Isabel could, based on what she's doing with the tax bills.
Yes, because you have to put, if we, we don't, if we didn't have that, add those numbers as part of the calculation, our non-new revenue rate would be higher. But since we have to use those numbers, then it drops a little bit, but not for that much.
So what I said before is true. Their property tax bill is going to change because by transferring this to a different fund, you're going to change the calculation.
I, it will not be part of my calculations anymore. Yes.
It changes the calculation.
But it changes the no new revenue rate, which is not on their tax bill and is not related to their tax bill.
It changes what we can do or can't do without their permission.
Changes our cap, not the actual collection or rate.
No, Isabel just said that it changes what they collect.
What we can collect.
The calculation doesn't determine what they collect. We determine that. The calculation determines.
Does it change how much we collect, Isabel?
It changed the, the rate that we can collect.
We can.
And the rate affects how much they pay.
The no new revenue rate is what it, she's saying it changes.
Changes, exactly, on the, the calculation of non-new revenue rate.
Which means the amount of tax rate you have to set. So you can collect the same amount of money that you did last year.
Even though that's not what it is.
Thank you, SB2, and it's highly complicated math.
Yeah, the difference, the difference, Gary, you're, you're confusing, you're confusing rates, benchmark rates with what we set as the actual rate.
Now, please don't put words in my mouth, Bobby.
I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm describing what you're doing.
No, you just did it. Please don't do that. I want to make clear to any citizen that's listening that their property tax is not going to be affected by this.
I'm glad that's what you're trying to explain because that's what we're all trying to explain. But when you keep talking about their property tax bill going up, it makes it sound like you think that if we remove this money, their property tax is going to go up. And that's not true at all. And that's what we're all trying to prevent here is someone getting the idea that that could happen.
Trying to get to is that I, I I would like to know that if I'm transferring this money to some other allocation, that I'm not impacting our citizens' property tax bill, how much they pay, plus or minus, it doesn't make a difference. I want to know that I'm not impacting it.
Well, it sounds like we're all on the same page then. And, and in our, maybe our different terminologies, but we're all trying to convey the same idea. Is that if we reduce this, it, it changes our cap, but not what the citizen pays. They're not going to see an increase. So if, since we're all in agreement, if I could share a little bit of, of, of my thoughts on this. I love the idea of economic development group. I, it's, it's a neat idea. The, one of my concerns is we already have issues filling seats on committees. And this is going to create yet another committee and, and more work that we need volunteers to do. We've done a fantastic job doing it the way we're doing it. I think we should just do it the way we're doing it instead of creating more government and a new economic development district. Just my thought. I, the fire control prevention, emergency medical services district is super interesting, especially since when you look at one-eighth of the sales tax, you're getting really close to the cost of firefighters that we just were denied the safer grant. So that's, that's really interesting. And since we've had such success with the crime control prevention district, but yes, there's been a little bit of extra money in that. And I hate to take money from one and, and whatnot. But it, it's something that I would love to see the city explore. Street maintenance. I'm a little bit turned off by the every 10-year vote. You know, we, we've had several people say that they would like to see us maintain sidewalks and streets to a higher degree. We've put that money forward. We're committing in that direction. I'm not sure we need to put sales tax money to the side just because of that. I think it can stay in general fund. Residents in JV are very, very active and, and happy to tell us where they think they, we should spend money. So let's leave it in general revenue, but let's keep sidewalk maintenance as a high priority and get those missing sidewalks installed. And obviously we shouldn't get rid of the crime control prevention district unless y'all plan on putting it in general funding, continuing to spend that money at the PD. Because we're well-known for having such a great and police department having, you know, more, more than one officer on duty per square mile. And what, where would we ever change that? So that's all my thoughts on this.
I would agree that we drop sidewalk and street maintenance from the discussion.
Greg, go ahead.
James, I, I agree. I think, I think one of the things we have to remember is that this is going to go to a vote for the citizens. So you're going to have to weigh property tax relief with general fund, increase in general fund revenue? That's not going to happen. Fire prevention, yes. Crime control, yes. Economic development, probably not. So I think you have to create a scenario that's palatable to the voters. And two, I think you need to be careful that you're not allocating too much money into funds that are highly restrictive. For instance, hot taxes, hotel motel, although not necessarily something that, that, that we define the parameters, but that's very limited and it's money the city that we can't use. So I think whatever we do has to be palatable to the voters, has to be flexible to the city council and has to serve a specific purpose on an annual ongoing basis. So to your point, if, if, if we're going to do that, which I, I think it is a good idea. I think you look at crime control and you think you look at fire prevention because those are, are things I think the voters will approve. Those are my thoughts.
Great way to land the plane. That was perfect.
Being so pragmatic.
Sorry, Gary.
Drew, I'm interested to hear your thoughts.
I like the pragmatism that Greg, Greg and James have shown. I, I don't personally, other than their comments, which make me think a little bit, I don't necessarily have a problem with the economic development. I do don't like the sidewalk idea. If we're going to, if we're interested in that, if it's palatable, then I'd say let's, let's give a small sliver, one-eighth or something. The idea of bond repayment comes to mind. And that would mean that if we wanted to expand, then we take bonds, which then allow, opens the gateway for future councils, which is, is great for that flexibility. I'm not pro-bond. I wish we could just cash flow everything. Not because it doesn't give people a voice, but because I, I think it's a smart thing to do to not set yourself in debt to future things. But that would be instead of a street repair, especially the, the infrastructure and the, um, the voting that has to go through with that. So the only thing I would differ on with, with James and Greg is I'm slightly open to a small sliver of economic development, only because I've Only because I've heard, heard it being clamored for in the uh, Conference of Plan. Both uh, the twenty sixteen version and the twenty twenty. Um, that would be an area where I'd at least like to explore it a little bit. I understand the volunteerism. James, that's a, that's a fair point, but I'd, I'd say. The number one reason against it would be just because it gets more complicated, makes it a more complicated issue that when we bring things to the voters, right? And and uh, fire and police, everybody understands that everybody's gung ho. Um, regarding those allocations. Um, you know, I'm not in favor of necessarily reducing crime control. Um, but if we find that year over year, we have a bigger, bigger fund than what we need. And I'd like to have those conversations with Chief Riggs, then maybe we consider a sliver of that going away. But uh, I don't think cutting it in half from where it is today is is wise either.
Bobby?
Who's in favor of cutting it in half?
I, I didn't say anyone was. I was saying if we were going to reallocate everything by a fourth of these options, Greg. So, so sorry, I wasn't trying to put.
I I did throw that out there, just, just if for some reason, the timeline, my question was more of the timelines of. The did, the Crime Control Prevention District uh, was re re-upped in twenty thirteen. And if if it was statutory that it has to last for ten years or whether it can, it can be reallocated. So that's why I threw that out there. Um, just sort of the base of our conversation, but. And remember, nothing says we can't fund more from the general fund for these departments. Everybody knows that we support the Fire and Police Department. They need something, we get it for them. And by reducing crime control prevention isn't saying we're taking money away from the PD or we're going to spend less on the PD. It's just making sure that we don't over allocate restricted funds.
Yeah, I I think uh, to piggyback off of what Greg said, because I do think that he, he really laid it out the best way. That number one, whatever we do, it has to be something that we, we believe that the citizens are going to come out and support at the ballot box. Uh, because they're going to approve whatever it is we propose. And if we are going to commit a dedicated revenue stream to something, it needs to be something. The whole point of this is to say, we are committing not only this council, but councils for the foreseeable future. Uh, we're committing our community to say, these funds can only be used for this, that this is such an important thing. That we are going to tie the hands of future councils and absent a vote, future, you know, citizens. Uh, regarding how they can use the sales tax dollars that are collected. And they're really, again, absent a compelling case for these other subject matters, to me, the only two things. Well, maybe other than flood mitigation, but that's something that just, the two things that we know will always need funding. That we will always need to continue to dedicate uh, tax dollars to are our police. Our fire and our EMS. They, they are the bedrock of everything we do here. They're the, the. The primary reason that the city of Jersey Village as an entity exists. Uh, and and I think that that is something that citizens are going to get behind. And we know it's something we're always going to have to spend money on and that we're always going to continue to make investments in. Um, uh, I do think they should be on equal footing uh, regarding funding. So I would have no problem with moving the whole thing over to the Fire Department, particularly because of the fact that we have continued to talk ever since I've been on council. About the fact that we are going to need to move, uh, we are going to need to increase the, the uh, paid. Uh, professional uh, presence in our fire department. And this would be a way of ensuring that we have the revenues dedicated for that purpose uh, for the foreseeable future.
You know, the other thing that that we should probably point out is that sales tax revenue is really tied to, I mean, tied to sales tax. So we, since I've been on council since what, twenty fifteen, the sales tax revenue. Has increased uh, by fifty percent. So this, if we were talking about allocating something to a Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Services District. Um, we're basically tying, tying that s- that rate to the success of Jersey Village as far as business goes. So if we continue to bring in new, new, new business, if we continue to see these sales tax uh, revenues increase. This is also increasing that. So I think. Uh, you know, we talked about the Crime Control Prevention District, which was, which was reauthorized in twenty thirteen. And as I mentioned, since twenty fifteen, the sales tax base has increased by fifty percent. So um, so you have seen the rate that Crime Control Prevention District brings in revenue increase by fifty percent. Um, so I, I. Don't want to label anything as, um, you know, taking money away from the police department. But um, you know, I do think that it's wise for, I think, I think what I'm hearing from most, most council members right now. Is that the most palatable uh, proposal going forward to the voters would be to focus on. On uh, creating a Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Services District um, fund. And and keep, of course, keep the Crime Control Prevention District going. I think it would be wise at the same time to look at the Crime Control Prevention District rate. And and see, you know, kind of like we do every year with our budget, is look at capital outlays for the next five, ten years. Look at um, you know, fire department, how many more firefighters do we think we're going to have to bring on full time over the next five, ten years? Um, look at how much revenue we're expecting to bring into the Crime Control Prevention District over the next ten years. Is it too much? I mean, there is a, there is only a certain amount of police officers we can have on the street, a certain amount of cars we can uh. Cru- cruisers we can have on the street. These are funds that are tied up by what you can spend. Um, and it would be, it would be wise that since we've seen this, this, you know, exponential sales tax growth. Thank goodness, o- over the last five, six, seven years, that we look at. Maybe bringing something forward to the citizens that we can explain, look, these are the, these are the costs that we're seeing over the next ten years in these departments. And this is why we would want to allocate this percentage to these funds. Does anybody have any thoughts on, thoughts on that?
Well, I, well, I think there's a general consensus that reallocation of the property tax relief, sales tax portion is a good idea. I, I, I don't know if they're, if Austin, you're looking for a specific at this time or just conceptually, whether it's a good idea. And I think conceptually, it's a good idea. And I think the rest of the council would agree and probably further discussion down the road as to which areas we need to concentrate on.
Yeah.
Looking for more information?
Yeah, I, I, I think this was a good general discussion to get, to get us started about what, what priorities we believe. Would, would uh, we want to see um, on a, on a ballot going to, going for the citizens to, to vote on. Um, now, it would be nice to see what those numbers would look like so that, because we, we are going to be the people that will. You know, have to explain it to the citizens, um, why we want to do this and why it's a good thing and what this would pay for. I think, I think that would be really uh, really wise. So I think, you know, the, the action on the agenda is, is no official action. We're just basically talking about it. And um, you know, for something to end up on the ballot in May, uh, for voters to approve or disapprove. Um, we would need to maybe have something uh, in a, in a future council meeting in the next one or two months to uh. You know, to sort of see what, what it, what the police department has on the, on their radar for ten years, what the fire department has on their radar in the next ten years. What we would need from these funds uh, to cover, to cover that. Um, and and what, what we can do is that for that allocation. Uh, I think that would be wise to just see something like that going forward. But I think, Greg, you're right. I think, and all the council members, I think you're right. We're, we want to make sure that um, this uh, this current allocation is just not really. You know, with all the changes that happened in the legislature uh, last year, we want to make sure that we're not tying our hands. Um, when it comes to the, the, the way that taxes are calculated. And um, this council has also, let's not forget, we've lowered, we, we've increased uh, property tax exemptions. Um, for home set, home set exemption, for over sixty five exemption, disabled exemptions. Uh, we've lowered the, the property tax rate this year. Uh, I think last month, several of you guys that are not term limited. Uh, verbally committed to doing the same next year, once hopefully the pandemic uh, dies down. And and we're able to see some more predictable trends. So I think uh, everything down the road is pointing to everyone's property tax bill going down. Um, as long as, you know, we have council members who are committed to that. Um, so I, I'm not really worried about reallocating the property tax reduction. I, I, I do worry about that. Um, as our, as our sales tax continue, you know, greatly can continues to climb. That impacting uh, our, our, our cap calculation. And also impacting our chapter three eighty agreements going forward, which have been extremely successful for our city. Uh, and enabled a lot of the property tax, property tax reductions that, that this council has pushed forward, so. Uh, does anybody have any more thoughts, questions, concerns? I think we've given.
Question. Austin, uh, we, we ever, we, we've done transfers from the general fund into the CCPD, correct?
From general fund to CCPD? I don't believe so.
We. Okay, well, maybe I've understood, misunderstood some things, but we have made uh, allocated money or. We've uh, increased the budget or or.
We, we transfer funds from CCPD to the general fund, but not, not from general fund to CCPD.
Well, that's where I was getting to anyway, but um, so it's possible that you've got sales tax going into the CCPD. That you can then transfer to the general fund.
No.
No?
For you, you use the, you expend the funds from CCPD. Comes back to the general fund. It's the, it's, yeah, so.
Bookkeeping issue.
Yeah.
Say it again, please.
When the CCPD district collects the sales tax, the district sets the budget for that. That budget is transferred to the general fund. The money is transferred to the general fund and it's technically spent out of the general fund. Bookkeeping, as Council, Councilor Holden said.
But the money is all allocated to crime control and prevention.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, these are restricted funds.
Yeah, they are restricted. So basically, if you did to, to fire department, it would be the same way.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm basically seeing that you've, you've kind of automatically set your budget on your police department and your fire department. Based on how much ta- sales tax you've collected. And I, I really don't like that idea, but I understand where Greg is coming from on the pragmat, pragmatism of it.
You don't, you supplement your police budget with, with your crime control. So you, you, you're not changing any, you're not setting your budget. It, it's just, you set your budget, then you figure out how you're going to pay for it, whether it's general fund or crime control. One, and it does this all the time.
Right. It, it's very important, you know, we, we set the budget every single year. The, the, the revenue, revenue is different from the budget. You know, it's, you don't, you can have revenue coming into this CCPD fund and the fire, fire uh, fund. All you want, but what you're actually setting for a budget doesn't, you don't have to spend it all. Uh, you know, it, it's. It's allocated every single year by the council that sits there and 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 creates the budget, so. Um, but that, that's why I'm saying it's, it's very important that, that we, that we have, have our city staff look at the capital outlays. The capital expenditures in these two departments for the next five, ten years. So that we, we do our best to make sure that those, that what we allocate to them is not more than, more than they would need. But also not less than what they need, just make, make it.
I, I, I just, I haven't really seen the up and down that I remember. Because I think that the uh, money that's in the CCPD, that bottom line has slowly increased. In the years that I've been on council. So basically, it's collected more than what we have spent.
We can change that.
Yeah, and that's what we're, that's what we're talking about, is, is uh, you know, is looking at, looking at those. It's those rates in a smart way, just like we, just like we budget proper tax and sales tax revenue. It, it, it needs to be looked at and. Done, done in a wise way, but it is, it is, as Bobby said, it's sort of, we're, we're, we're tying. As a community, the voters are coming forward and saying, we are committed to these two, these two very important pillars of our community. And we want to specifically supplement those um, to the point where not even a city council could, could take money away from it.
Well, not, eh, you know. Yeah, I don't want to nitpick it, but you know, I think the city's also dedicated to garbage collection, clean water in and dirty water out. Those are essential things that you're not going to give up.
Right, but there's no, yeah.
One, one comment, no discussion, please. But on the chapter three eighty agreements, I, I think, for instance, Village Center, I think those are all dollar amounts. I think what we have to be sure is that we don't do something with our property tax reduction, our property or our, and our sales tax. Our sales tax rate that might affect those three eighty agreements, that may underfund them or or create an issue. So, so this has, anything we do here needs to be in conjunction with our three eighty agreements to make sure they mesh.
Excellent point, yeah. Yeah.
I, I have made a note of that already.
Okay, that's a very good point because, yeah, we, that, that, that half cent property tax production rate was included in some of that, some of those three eight agreements. All right, Austin, you've got your marching orders and we look forward to uh, more discussions in the future. Um, let's move along to uh, item number five, discuss and take appropriate action regarding chamber. Uh, sorry, char- charter amendments to be included in the May twenty twenty one special election ballot. Um, Lori Cootie.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, last meeting, the Charter Review Commission uh, gave the report to the council. And they recommended that um, four different amendments be made to our existing charter. The council did discuss those recommended um, amendments that. Uh, one was to eliminate section one point oh eight and one point oh nine. Then they recommended some changes to the publication of ordinances. And uh, they recommended that we do uh, gender neutral language. And they also uh, recommended some changes to the term limits for city council. Uh, council did discuss those four items and um, in their discussions, they uh, asked that staff come back with some better language. On the term limits uh, amendment in order to uh, accommodate. Uh, any gap that may uh, occur in, in a council member resigning their position. In order to run for another uh, position on council. Um, both uh, Scott and I worked on that new language and um, we've included that in your packet. Uh, the, what we need from you tonight is confirmation on each of the four uh, proposed amendments by the commission. Um, so that we can move forward with uh, getting a uh, order for calling in election in May. And that will need to be on the January uh, council agenda.
And just to be clear, um, when this goes on the ballot, if it goes on the ballot. Um, is it four different charter amendments on the ballot or is it altogether one or is that something?
It has to be four different uh, amendments. There, each amendment, each subject matter has to be a separate amendment.
Okay.
And at what point would those go into effect? I'm sorry, Andrew, for cutting you off.
They would go into effect, uh, well, you could, you could dictate an effective date by, by the. Proposed amendment, but a- as a practical matter, that. They would go into effect. After the election, the uh, city council would adopt an ordinance of making them effective at that, in that day. So that would affect future elections after uh, the next election.
And that's effectively what I was getting at, but uh, when they get voted on and when the election registration is for the next election. One happens before the other, so we're, we're, yeah, it's pretty self evident. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, can, can we recount uh, item uh, proposal number four? I know it's, it got a little confusing last time about different gaps and. So what, what would this number four, that the uh, the term limit recommendations? Can you kind of in a nutshell describe what, what we're changing here?
Right.
Scott, make that to you.
Yeah.
So if you go to uh. My uh, PDF, I guess it's section two oh one.
Page three.
PDF page, yeah. Uh, so the first, the first minor change is it makes clear that the election is by majority vote. Since majority vote is a, is a more defined concept than popular vote. Uh, and then the second change uh, is in B. Uh, it has a portion of a term shall not calcu- uh, count in calculating the total number of consecutive terms. In other words, in order to be considered a prior term, it has to have been a full term, not a part of a term. Uh, and then C addresses the situation of having, uh, an off year. Uh, council member run, uh, against a, uh. Council member at, at that, in that year. Uh, so the general rule is under the election code, your name can only appear on the ballot once. So if, uh, and a, uh, if a person wants to run against another council member. Whose term ends on the same year, uh, it's a, it's a choice they have to make. Uh, and, uh, is to go to that position, they can't, they can't, uh, keep their existing position or run for two positions at one time. The, uh, language added would make an off year candidate have to resign their office. Uh, if they wanted to run against someone that was holding office. And, uh, then there would be a special election called. To fill the unexpired term, uh, for that person. So, uh, it, it effectively if. Uh, and the most typical situation would be if a council member wants to run for mayor. Uh, and, and it, but their term doesn't expire in the same year as the mayor's term. They would have to, they would automatically resign their office by running against the mayor. And then there would be a special election called to fill that position. And they would continue to serve as a council member until the, um, mayor's election. And then one of the two, uh, would be elected or some other person would be elected as mayor and would go from there.
Okay.
So Scott, let me, let me add a little clarification. So. Um. If, if a council person wanted to run for mayor in an off year, he would have to resign effective. Um. Effective when the new mayor started. So that, that seat would be empty until the special election?
No, there, we, we make it clear that under the holdover, uh, the, under normal circumstances, the person would be a holdover. And will continue to, uh, hold the office, uh. Continue to hold their office.
He could run, he could run for that, his same seat though.
But so, but we created an automatic resignation. And, but limited the power of council under the charter. If you, if the position, uh, under normal circumstances. If the, if you resign your position, the council could appoint a person to fill that position. We've eliminated the ability of council to fill that position by appointment prior to the election. So that person would continue to hold their office, uh, until the election. Uh, at which time they would, uh, they would, their resignation would take effect.
But that person could run for the seat to which he, from which he resigned from.
No, the way it would work is like this, Greg. So if, let's say we're coming up on the May election. And either position one, four, or five wants to run for mayor. They would then say, okay, I'm going to run for mayor. So I'm filing for that position on the ballot. I am resigning my position on, let's say it's council member one. I'm resigning my position from council member one effective the date of the canvas. So they would serve all the way up until May, the canvas. Also, what would happen is when he gives it's his resignation, we will then call a special election. In May to fill his unexpired term, which, so he wouldn't be able to run for that. So on the ballot in May would be. So number one running for mayor and the number one position in a special election for the unexpired term. So people would sign up to run for that position.
Okay, okay.
Lori, as a practical matter, let's say that someone. Let's use place one, continue to use that one. Uh, let's say someone from place one files to run for mayor. Uh, and so this clause applies, but let's say that they wait until the last day of filing. To, uh, for the regular election, that you wait till the last day of filing. Does that provide enough time for all of the mechanisms required to call a special election? I, I don't know if, if that requires counsel to actually pass. Uh, either an ordinance or resolu- I guess resolution, calling the special election. Do, do we have enough time to be able to do all of that?
Yeah, we, Scott and I both worked through that timetable and, and even if they waited to the last day to do it, there would still be enough time to call that special election.
And there would be time for the public to, to understand that there was a vacancy and to apply for the, for the position.
Okay. And the other thing is, I, I assume that we purposefully did not contemplate, you know, obviously if, let's say place one files the first day. And then they have a change of heart a couple of weeks in and they withdraw their application. We've, this is written in such a way that as soon as they file, it's a done deal, correct?
It's a done deal. It's.
Because of all of the, the other things that have to be done. Okay.
They should be careful.
Yeah. Wait for the last day.
What's the benefit of this? Uh, the couple of, it has two, two benefits. Uh, one is, uh, if you have someone run for, uh, against the mayor, then, uh. That position gets filled by the electorate instead of having somebody appointed to fill the position. So it lets the electorate fill the position, the voters instead of city council. And the second is, uh, just the, uh, it deals with the animosity. That may develop if you have a council member running against another council member. Uh, and, and if they, uh, if they lose, then they, you've got potential animosity from the, the two that have run against each other. So I think that, you know, both of those. They lose what? If they lose what?
They lose their election.
If they lose the election against the mayor, they would continue to serve on council.
But this removes that. Yeah, but this, yeah, that's what I'm saying is this removes that.
Oh, you're saying that somebody that's in the even years. Runs for mayor. That somebody was running against them. Somebody was running for their position, but they weren't up for reelection in that year. That's right. They would continue to serve in their position. So you're saying the animosities between the person that won the mayor's seat and the council member? Where's the animosity? No. We don't have any animosity.
Let, let, let me make, let me make a comment. I, I understand why some people would want this. I, I'm in agreement with all the provisions with the exception of this one. And I understand why some people might want this in there, but, but I, I don't see a compelling reason to change this. I, I think. I, I think we're making a change for the sake of making a change. I don't think we're addressing a specific issue that we've had. Or incurred in the past or we have right now. Um, yes, there's always room for animosities, always, there's always room for that. It's human nature, but we're all adults here. So. But for, I'm going to put it out there that I'm in favor of all three with the exception of this one. Cause I don't see a compelling reason to put it in place. I think it's a, it's a, like somebody has said before, it, it is a, uh, solution. Uh, without a problem.
I can see a compelling reason to not put it in place. I think you're cheating, but I think you're cheating the voters.
Oh, how or how? Please explain.
Voters, the voters elected that person to a two-year term.
He's choosing to resign though.
He's not choosing to resign unless you make this into, put this into the charter.
Yeah, but he's.
Forcing the resignation.
He's choosing to run for another.
This is unfair to the voters.
Well, if, if they, if the voters elected that person for a two-year term, and if that, that's such a sacrosanct issue. Then why doesn't that person serve out their entire term rather than before they even finish the term that the voters entrusted them with? They've run off and decided they want to do something else.
Why does?
I mean, I think it kind of cuts both ways.
Well, people still resign from the position too.
I have to agree to a point with Greg that. I'm good with all of them. This one brings some, some topic of discussion and the, the second benefit that Scott allayed with is. Is just really not that necessary to me. I don't think we need to do it just for the second reason. The first one rings though. By forcing the resignation, we force a vote of the electorate. And allowing them to choose who to replace instead of having us appoint someone in June, which. We've seen happen quite a few times recently.
Yeah.
And so I. I don't think it's the best solution. But I'm not opposed to it.
So. I get what you're saying, James. Is it possible that? I was going to say that we forced that, that election or we put that election up in, in the charter without this, but. Uh, thinking through that, you can't force a special election at the same timeframe without that resignation. So.
And that's correct because the, if, if council doesn't, uh, you can only hit call. Counsel's option is to call a special election, but there's only two uniform election dates, November or, uh. May. And if you, uh, and if you call one for November, then they're just going to be serving the term from November to May. And, and be up for election a, a second time. Can I put, add something else here? There's another part of this, uh, item four. You have, uh, this filling of an, uh, uh, a term midway through. Somebody resigns, council appoints somebody and that time. Served in that period is not used to, in the calculation of a full, uh, term limit. Am I saying this right? That's correct. A, a, a partial term does not count as a term for the limitation purposes. Well, this brings to mind that if somebody that's in the odd years. Was to run. For mayor and they only had, well, they'd served seven years. They only have one year left in the term limit, but they've run for mayor and it's a two-year term. Now we're saying that they can't serve out the term.
No, we're changing that. We're saying that, that the part, that one partial year does not. Count.
That's not how I read.
calculation.
Are you understanding what I'm saying, Scott? I, I do. I, the, the proposed changes do not, uh, shorten the amount of time that a person can serve. As mayor or council member, they extend the time that you may serve. So if you ran for mayor when you only had one year left on your eight years. Of term limits. Uh, you could serve out the two-year term for the mayor.
Your year seven wouldn't, would be a partial year and would not count.
Right.
Right. So yes, to answer your question, yes, you, you can call this the Andrew Mitchum amendment because that's, that's basically. What happened to me was I took over Justin Ray's council seat, which was a, which was halfway through. And then I took over as mayor or ran for mayor and became mayor, uh, through, through my, through one year of my, what, third term, third term. And so even though I, I, I could have, if I got on the right track, could have been. Eight years, I'm actually only serving six total. So this, this would have. Basically allowed, let's say, for example, Drew, who was appointed in my, in my place in position one. That, that one year term does not count for his total calculation. So down the road, he, if he follows the same track as me and he wanted to someday run for mayor. Uh, he would, he would be basically be able to, it, that one year wouldn't count towards that, that whole.
So basically as somebody that is serving their fourth term as a council member. One year into it, they decide to run for mayor. If they won the mayor's position, they would be allowed to serve the two years.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Currently they wouldn't be allowed to run at all.
Right. All right. Um.
If, if I may, cause I, I haven't quite had a chance to chime in on this. Um, so. To me, I think that this is important because I, 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 I do think that we have, as others have mentioned, we have seen. Other instances where, uh, we've, we've had multiple appointments over the last couple of years when, uh, other council members have run for mayor. Um, and so I, I think any opportunity we have to give the electorate an opportunity to. Uh, you know, to actually put in place their choice for the office, we ought to give them that opportunity. Um, the other thing is I do think that there is a certain amount of. You know, although this is not a high priority, uh, as James mentioned, his, his concern is giving the electorate an opportunity to, you know. Name their, their, uh, representatives any chance we have, but I do think there's a certain amount of fairness where, you know. Greg mentioned last time we met and talked about this, about deterring people from running for mayor. Um, you know, if, if I, you know, hypothetically, if I run for mayor. Uh, I cannot run for place three. Uh, that's a disadvantage. That's a real like, that, that's a, a potential deterrent. Uh, particularly if someone, uh, that's in the even year cycles, you know, places one. Three and four, no, one, four and five, sorry, one, four and five. If one of them decide to run, they can do it at no cost at all. So it could actually create an additional deterrent. You know, we, we all are, we get along pretty well. Uh. I don't necessarily think that prior councils could say that, uh, and I could see a situation where, uh, someone as a tactical. Uh, situation may choose a current council member who runs in the even numbered years, might choose to challenge someone for mayor. Uh, you know, with, with no risk to their current office. Um. I think by putting all of the candidates on the same playing field in terms of what's at stake, I think gives. A, a better result. I, I think it, 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 it keeps any kind of gamesmanship from entering into the equation. And keeping others out of running where others might have very little to, to lose by running.
Okay.
But again, that's secondary. So, so to Greg's point about a solution in search of a problem, yes, if that were the only reason I would agree. But, uh, but I think the electorate issue is, is, that's the problem.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn on, on, on this one because I've personally been impacted by, by, by this charter. This part of the charter myself, um. I, I, I think I, I tend to go with, with, uh, Greg's point of view that it is, it is a problem. Or it's a solution looking for, for a problem because. Yeah, there's some gamesmanship that can, that can happen and that's, that's definitely a danger and, and same, but. You know, having gone through the appointment process, having done it myself and then having to go through it again to appoint. Someone in, in, in my position when I became mayor. You know, those, those people that apply were all great people and council members who are all elected, vetted, vetted those people. We took many, many, many emails, many, many, you know, a lot of us went and chatted with each candidate, with each person who applied. So I do think that there's still. A, a, a good process in place to fill that one year. Um, and then also it has been nice to see that the people who have been appointed so far have all been really great people. I'm not talking myself up here, but, um, you know, we've all served quite well and one of us has gone on to become mayor. And so getting people into the position, um. And exposing them to one year of service, uh. I think that's actually a little bit of an advantage. I think, I think the, uh, the, the, the cons outweigh. The, the pros here to the point where I, I think I'm going to side with Greg on this one about not putting it on there. That's just, that's just. You know, and the charter is, you know, it's something that we should be very careful about changing, uh, uh. Without a really, really good reason why. And I just don't see a really good reason why for the, for, for that particular one.
Um, I'm going to jump in and, um, I'm fine with one, two, and three as written. I'm fine with section. Two dot oh dot one, A and B. It's section C that, that I think all of us are, are having a debate about. Um, I would suggest that, um. Yeah. The state of Texas delayed the May municipal elections from May until, um, November this year, right? So, so there's a lot of cities that were. You know, I guess those positions weren't unfilled. They just carried over for six months. Um. But, but if we're really interested in sending this to the electorate, and I have no problem with that. I would suggest that. I would suggest that council, we go with, with a, you know, four-person council and a mayor allotment. For those six months until, until, and hold a special election in, in May, if we, if, if that's the decision council wants to take and move it towards a, uh, away from, from an appointment system.
Yeah, sometimes.
Go ahead, James.
Sometimes the, the appointment system gets accused as a, a good old boy, or they picked their friend. May I remind you all, it was a three-one-one vote that everyone was fairly set on the last time around. It was not a, hey, th- this is the golden chosen child. It was, there was a lot of discussion and disagreement.
No offense, true.
No, I have golden hair, but that, yeah.
Yeah, I think on principle, anytime you have an opportunity, when it comes to the composition of the council, as far as who's on it, um, you have an opportunity to go to the electorate, and you don't, I think you gotta, you gotta have a really good reason. And I'm not talking about, I, I get about the whole, like, not amending unless absolutely necessary uh, when it comes to the charter, but I, I, I think we are specifically declining to go to the electorate in an opportunity, we have a clear opportunity to do so with very little um, reason to not.
I, I think Bobby, I think, I, I, I think your point's well taken, but you could, you could extrapolate that to any expenditure over five hundred thousand should go to electorate.
That's why I specifically, that's why I talked about people. I agree when we're talking about substantive issues where it's much more complicated, but when we're talking, we're talking about the, the only difference between this situation and any other election is timing. The actual subject matter and the amount of time that they have to file and run and to make their case and all of that is exactly the same. Uh, I, we're not talking about an expenditure versus a member of council. We're talking about a member of council versus a member of council. And, and we entrust that to the electorate every other time, except in this situation. And, 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 and the reason the charter was written that way, I believe, was to deal with surprise resignations for all of a sudden having a, a vacancy in a different situation. Um, I, I, I think, so I, I, there is a, there are times where you can't, you can't just up and have an election anytime someone resigns, because we do have uniform election dates. But this is such a unique situation in terms of the timing, but it's actually one that fits perfectly within the, the election framework we have under state law, that again, I, 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 I think that the, the, the weight of respecting the electorate's right to decide their representatives needs to have an extraordinarily compelling case to not do this. There needs to be, the argument needs to be extremely clear and solid, because otherwise, as James pointed out, even if it's not true, and I don't think there's a good old boys' club here at all, but uh, if someone who maybe didn't believe that before, after hearing our debate tonight, if the vote goes to exclude this, but to, to give ourselves more wiggle room on term limits, uh, if, if someone who didn't believe that before now gets that perception, I, I mean, I, I just.
What, what other offices force a resignation when I run for another office? Congress does. Senate doesn't on, on the national level. Does, does it happen at the state level?
Quite a few states have a resign-to-run law.
Yeah, this, this is not that uncommon.
Well, I know it's not uncommon, but I'm asking for examples.
Florida, the entire state of Florida.
I'm talking about Texas. You know, municipalities, um, are, but, but at, at the state level.
Yeah, I'd have to, I, I can provide that information to you. There are some offices that if you apply for it, there's an automatic.
Well, I, I think we all have an opinion, and we'll, you know, I think it just needs to come down to a vote, and we'll decide whether to put on or not. I don't think anybody's gonna change anybody's mind at this moment.
I will notice and aside that there was, uh, for the notice provision, the second item, there's a House bill that's been introduced in the legislature that would effectively do the same thing.
Okay.
We don't take care of our own house, so Austin will do it for us.
We already.
Hopefully Austin will, will also do it, so.
Yeah.
We already are opening filing.
Um, well, I think, uh, there's compelling armen- arguments both ways. Um, I've, I've gone back and forth just listening to you guys chat about this, uh, you know, I, the, for me, looking, listening to what y'all have said, but also realizing that this, this, these items were brought forth by a committee of citizens that looked at this for a lot longer than we have, and they're asking us to put it towards other citizens to say yes or no. I, I think, I think we should respect their opinion and, and put this forward, and we should make our arguments either way, uh, before, you know, if you want to, before, before the ballot, before the election. Um, and then the citizens will, will decide. I think, um, I think it's safe to put, uh, I, I think it's safe to put this on, on the ballot. In, in my opinion, number four, the, the fourth, uh, fourth item. I think it's safe to put it on the ballot, uh, and see what the citizens have, some of the voters have to say about it.
So, um, one thing I wanted to ask Scott, i- i- if in putting it on the ballot the way we have it proposed, it's gonna be all or nothing. So if it doesn't pass, then partial terms will still be dealt with the way they are now. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Uh, uh, unless council breaks it up and does, A and B is one proposition and C is a second proposition.
I think you'll have a hard time passing the not count without the other. I, I think you keep it together, because they are part and parcel of the same issue.
So you're saying, uh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Unfortunately, I do not.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you just, if we, let's say we, we, we pulled C and put it in a separate item. I think C passes easily. I think that A, or I'm sorry, I guess B, the not count, we're literally just going to the voters and saying, hey, you know, if, if, uh, if I'm, uh, if I'm appointed, uh, don't let that count. I get an extra amount of time. You didn't get to choose me. Now you get to choose me later on, but it's like that whole first year where you didn't get to choose me. Um, you, you, that, that doesn't even count. I get to run for a whole other four terms. Uh, and so you're just, just extending time is all you're doing. At least with C, you're kind of balancing it out by saying, hey, we don't wanna, we don't wanna penalize someone who is a, or not appointed, in this case, who was elected partway.
I, I see where you're going now. I, I thought this was different. I thought we were, I thought Scott, it was four amendments, one, two, three, four, not I see four as being that A, B, C.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I thought we were breaking up.
The four.
So we're breaking up the, the, the notice in one. The gender neutral language, two.
We're, 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 we're getting rid, number one is getting rid of the traffic, the traffic cameras.
Oh, that's right, that's right. That's, so yeah, and then, and then we were, number four was going to be all of the changes other than gender neutral language to two oh one, correct?
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, four makes sense to me. I agree with you. It doesn't make sense to break down.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Four. Okay.
Sorry, I, I thought someone was proposing that we break up the.
No, I was just pointing out.
And then the resignation.
I think, yeah, Lori was just asking, should we break it up? I think you're.
Pointing out that if you don't break it out and it don't pass, then you don't get the, the extension. You don't get to, you have to count the one year as part of a whole.
I, I, so this, this is a very heated topic just within the six of us. You break up one, two, and three and four, because one, two, and three, I think are gonna automatic pass, that nobody's gonna argue those. My concern is that four becomes a point of contention, and then we don't get one, two, and three.
Well, let me ask you this. How would everyone feel if the, the partial term not counting did not pass? But the part with the, the having to resign and having a special election did pass. That person who just ran an election, they, they, they're running an election to serve one year, and that counts as a term.
But I don't, I don't see that. That's what I'm saying, is I think we're breaking this up in different ways. If you look at the bullet points on page one, number one is limiting, that's the red light camera. Number two is postings. Number three is gender neutral. Number four is all the things you're talking about. So you would, you cannot have partial and resi- and not resignation or resignation not partial. It's all together.
Agreed. And, and I think, just to be clear, I think we're, we're talking, we're pa- two ships passing, not here. I'm talking about keeping it grouped exactly as it's on the page. I thought, didn't someone suggest that if we were going to propose this, that we split it up into five proposals? Someone said splitting these two on number four, splitting number four into two. No one said that?
No, I think she was just making sure.
Okay, somebody, somebody said something that led me to believe.
Pointing out the ramifications that this isn't all or none. So if you, if you wanted to, you know, I think we all ha- are, are in agreement on the, on the first part of it, that, that any portion of a term serve shall not count in calculating the total number of, I think we all want that. I think that, that's, that's fair, but it's the other part that it has a little bit of contention. And so therefore, if we do package it all together as, as proposed here, and it fails, you don't get the thing that most of us chatting today are talking about. That's what's just, it's an all or nothing, so just be aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think we're all okay with it being, yeah, I think the ramifications of breaking it up and one passing and one not passing, and any combination would not be good, so. Um, yeah, so I think we've talked this one to death. Let's, um, you know, I, I, I think that what we need to do moving forward is look, uh, have someone make a, a motion and see where council stands on an official vote.
Can we vote each item?
Oh wait, hang on, hang on. No, the, uh, discuss and take appropriate action is the, is the agenda item, so.
But we can have a motion on, I, I believe, Scott, that we, we have, we, we understand that we're gonna put number one, two, and three on there. The item four, which is about the term limits, if we have a motion right now to vote on whether to have it or not, then we'll know whether, what we need, if we need to include four as well.
You can have, uh, uh, you can have multiple motions under this one item, so you can.
How about we make a motion to approve item one, two, and three?
Okay.
Go ahead and make that motion, Greg.
The motion that we approve the suggested charter amendments, item one, two, and three.
A second.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Are we, are we approving it, or are we just directing the city manager to prepare a um, I guess ordinance or resolution, whatever it is?
To go on the ballot.
I think that's what approving it is, is to put that part on the ballot.
No, we're not calling it right now.
We're not calling it. What, what's happening right now is we are, we are, we are basically directing the city manager to put forward the documentation needed to bring it forward to council, to then be approved to put on the ballot, because we, we have in the future, we have to actually call the election. So we're not.
In this case, we've provided all of that direction. We don't really need to vote on anything. We're gonna vote in January on it when they bring it to us. And if we wanna cut number four at that point, we just amend it and cut it.
Can I ask, can we just amend four to leave off part C?
No, we, we, no, we, we chatted about that. I think, I think we all are, would like to see the citizens vote on whether that happens or not. That, that appears to be the consensus, but also that's kind of why we're doing this exact thing right now, is because we're all in agreement on items one, two, one, two, and three. It's number four that we, that perhaps, I'm getting the feeling some council members would probably not want to see come forward in January.
So Scott, if we bring the ordinance to call the, uh, election forward in January, and that one particular part doesn't pass, can they approve the ordinance without that, and we're still good to go with calling the election? Or, cause January's the last date we can call it.
Right. There will be, there will be an ordinance, uh, calling the special election on the city charter. The, the paperwork, the, the, most of the paperwork is gonna be involved with the gender neutral item. It's gonna be a very long ordinance because of that, but you can, at that point in time, city council can make the final decision of what you're actually gonna call for the election.
So they would approve the ordinance with or without it, and then we would just make the changes, and the mayor would sign the ordinance, and we're good to go after the January meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good, then I'm good with that. So we really don't need to take any action in, on this.
Right.
Correct?
Unless y'all wanna direct us not to prepare an ordinance, yes.
I, I, I think it's best that, that we just, we leave it as it is. I think we've had a great discussion on it. I think we understand where each of us stand, and then we'll have time to perseverate on it and talk about it in January, when it actually comes before us for approval, to go on the ballot or not.
And I think it'll be clearer, if, at that point in time, if you wanna cut part of it, how to do it without a big effort.
Sure. Okay. Moving along, last item, item number six, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash five seven, authorizing the closure and capping of the Seattle water well in perpetuity, and authorizing notice of such closure and capping to the TCEQ, along with the submission of a permit amended to satisfy permitting requirements. Harry Ward, Director of Health Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item is on the agenda. We should be able to get through it in less than ninety minutes. Uh, so go ahead. No, seriously.
Oh, you were joking?
Is that a challenge?
So I hope I was joking. Yeah, um, so what we have is a, a, a city asset, that's one of the wells. Uh, our permit requires it to either serve water or be a backup. Um, with regard to being an asset or plant manager, uh, Roy, Roy Garcia, um, he was tasked with bringing it online to conform to the permit, uh, back in twenty nineteen. Uh, as he embarked on doing that, it came to a point where we had to remove the pump and the casing in order to test the well. Uh, the well was shut down back around twenty years ago, uh, due to, uh, uh, groundwater drawdown and, uh, radon. Uh, so with the groundwater being drawn down, cavitation was occurring, the water, you know, uh, uh, the water efficiency was not there, and I guess radiation was found. So the well was shut down. Um, in his, um, um, in, in his part to bring the well back up online, we had to test it, because if it still has those issues, uh, then we cannot bring it online. Well, unfortunately, while, uh, Roy was, uh, working with the contractor to bring the pump and the casing and everything else out, uh, it basically fell apart due to non-use and corrosion. So what we had was a, uh, oh, approximately thirty thousand dollar, uh, testing bill, uh, suddenly jumped to a four hundred thousand dollar repair bill. And so, uh, Roy and I and, uh, Austin, uh, we spent some time uh, researching what it would take to repair it under various conditions, uh, or not repair it. Uh, so I guess this is where we're at. Uh, we have a, a, a number of proposals that are attached as appendices here uh, to test the well, and then also to repair it and replace all the parts that are in it. Um, uh, and then, of course, cleaning has to occur before you actually put anything back in it. So the bill is somewhere, somewhere three to four hundred thousand dollars if we were to repair it. Uh, we might save fifty to seventy-five thousand if we repair it without a warranty, and that means using all those substandard parts. So we had several options to look at, um, and the, the good, I guess the ideal option is to replace the well, uh, at a cost of around four hundred thousand dollars. Now, we don't have that money laying around, and so what we did was we evaluated whether or not it's really needed by the city. Um, what we have identified is that with the, uh, the other two wells, Jersey Village and the West Road, we can replace the City of Houston interconnect, uh, by about three hundred, uh, three times. Uh, if we had to. So the whole problem here is if the City of Houston. Uh, if we had to. So the whole problem here is if the City of Houston interconnect goes down, then we would have to supplement that loss with our groundwater. We currently have two wells and they could be pumping out 66 million gallons. Uh, let's see, per month. Uh, right now we are, uh, we're required to have 22 million purchased from the City of Houston. Uh, we actually are running 33 million. So we're, we're, you know, significantly above the minimum amount that we need. Uh, but it's not all we need. We currently use a little bit of it, uh, the West, uh, groundwater well. We use some of that to supplement the City of Houston and we do it for a couple of reasons. One is chlorine residuals. Uh, they haven't been making it to the west side of the city very well. Uh, so we, we can bump it up using the groundwater and all of that's perfectly permissible. So the bottom line is that, um, we believe we can do away with the Seattle well, uh, which would require capping it. Uh, it's about $35,000 or so to cap the well, uh, which would take it out of commission. Uh, before we do that, uh, we would have to go to TCEQ and let them know that we're, uh, applying to change our permit and go to two wells instead of three. Uh, so they would have to approve that before we would take it out of service. If they don't approve it, then, uh, you know, we have to come up with $400,000. Uh, we believe they will approve it because we can justify, we don't need it. Uh, so that's where, that's where we're at. Because of the analysis we've done, we're recommending that we go ahead and close the well, cap it. And prior to that, get approval from TCEQ to go from three backup groundwater storage well, uh, sorry, groundwater wells to two. Uh, we're also keeping in mind that when Village Center starts to open up, uh, there is a plan for, uh, uh, let's see, another interconnect and, uh, perhaps another well. So, uh, e- even as the future, uh, moves forward and the, the city does grow at the Village Center, um, we have additional water supplies planned for that area. So we're pretty comfortable and recommending that we close this well and get TCEQ's approval to do it. And that's what we're here to discuss.
Harry, you're the most thorough public works director we have ever had. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for Harry?
Yeah, got a couple.
Yeah.
Harry, first off, and this, this is not a reflection on you or Austin, but it is infuriating to find out that a well that was put out of service 20 years ago was just ignored and not maintained to the point that when we go to look at it, it falls apart. And now I've got a $400,000 bill in front of me when PM could have handled this. That's infuriating. Um, and is, is not a reflection on either one of you because neither of you have been here long enough. Weren't here back then. Um, and it's by your proactiveness that this was brought to light and you're working to fix it. I realize that the City of Houston provides our water. I have some major concerns. They had the breakage, was it last year, um, with their budgeting issues? And, and I am concerned about their own preventative maintenance programs. Going down to two wells, can one of those wells provide 100% of the service?
Uh, yes, uh, West, the West, uh, the West well, number three, it can put out 66 million gallons, uh, per month. Uh, right now, again, we're using 33. So just the one well can put out double what we're using from the City of Houston right now.
Okay. Can the other well put out, what, what I'm getting at is if we go down to two wells and we lose City of Houston and lose one of those, can we still provide service?
Okay. So that Jersey Village well, that's number two. It can provide a maximum of 38 to 39 million gallons per month. And we're, again, we're using 33. So right now either Jersey Village, uh, a well, number two, plant number two can supply the entire city. Or West can also provide it at an even higher quantity. Be, be, be aware you're pushing the wells at that point because I'm, I'm talking maximum, uh, output here. Uh, but yes, uh, uh, each single backup well can supply, um, at least 33 million gallons per month, which is what we're using right now. And in fact, they can provide a little more than that. West can provide a lot more than that.
So that, that number for two i- is, is far too close for comfort. And I, I would say that wells, we're not going to stand on that. I, I would like to see a third well installed. And that goes into CIP and planning for the future. Uh, you mentioned Village Center may have a well, you know, maybe, may we count on that? Maybe we just, what, what would be the downside to leaving this situation as it is? Um, until we either have the funds to, my concern is if we close it with TCEQ, getting it back.
Uh, yeah. And, and, uh, yeah. So, uh, we can't leave it like it is for too much longer is my suggestion. Because the permit requires it to be online. It's not online. I need 400 grand to put it online. So we can't just, uh, you know, kick it, uh, down the road for too long because if TSEC comes back, the first thing they're going to say is, is that plant online? And I'll say no. They're going to say you're in violation.
How, how likely are we looking at a well at Village Center? Who's paying for that? Or you mentioned it. What, what is that going to look like?
Well, I think we would probably lean towards an interconnect first, which is also planned. Uh, so I think we need to get a little more information to identify the problem we're trying to solve. Uh, for me to come back and say, we definitely need a well, uh, we definitely need the interconnect or we need both. Keeping in mind that it's also south of 290. So if we had the well on the south side, you'd have to get the water up to the north anyway. So you have additional costs there. Um, so it, it was well placed in the city where it was. Uh, Seattle, Jersey and West, they're strategically and geographically aligned through the city to give it pretty nice coverage. Uh, and we're making use of that with the West well because the interconnect on the east side, uh, residuals don't quite make it all the way to the west side. So we're actually lucky that somebody planned the city the way it was. It has worked well. Uh, and right now we just have a, uh, a, a third well that we're permitted to have online. It's not online. It has not been online for 20 years. So the city's been in violation for 20 years and got away with it.
Guys, with something as vital as water infrastructure, I'm very concerned about relying on two wells when one of them doesn't have the ability to cover us.
The both wells do have the ability.
Yeah.
One of, one just barely covers. Yes. Sorry.
Yes, correct. So now, uh, 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 sir, you, uh, one of the comment, uh, let me just, we'll check here. Uh, the Jersey Village well, the smaller one, does not have a gen set. So if we lost power, that well would go down as well. Uh, the West Road does have a gen set. That's our main, uh, groundwater well, uh, that will keep us in business if we lose City of Houston and we lose power. The West well would still cover us.
Okay. What are you looking at? A $70,000 or so expenditure for a gen set?
Oh, I don't know. I don't have a cost. Uh, I think Austin was looking at a generator, uh, with a grant with chief bits and rigs, I believe.
I think it was a 125,000, give or take a little bit, and we, we have applied for the grant for that.
Must be about 200 KDA or more.
How likely is it for a, a well to go down? Maybe, what, maybe I'm crazy to think we need that, that three is, is what we need. I mean, that's not what you're recommending anyway. So how likely would it be for there to be a failure?
Well, um, councilman, the other issue is we don't know if the water's any good. We have never gotten to the point where we could test it. So we might spend, uh, something like, I don't know, 35 on up to maybe 60,000, testing or cleaning the well, uh, to find it can't be used because it still has radiation or it doesn't have the, uh, groundwater elevation to pull from. So it's still an unknown at that. Uh, if we, you know, if we had guarantees was all good water, I may be asking for the 400,000. But we don't even have that guarantee at this point.
Harry, how much does it cost to drill a new well that, that would provide similar production to this one? We're talking about capping.
Well, you'd need some sort of studies to be done to make sure you're finding an aquifer down there. And, uh, I'll, I'll just say they, they, they charge by the foot. Uh, so a non-reputable person might go a lot deeper than a, a, another person using good, uh, research data. Uh, I, I could easily get a, a quote on that, um, and, and feed it to you. I, I don't want to guess at the moment.
I'm just wondering.
By the diameter though.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the cost, like if, 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 uh, if we're looking at a well that may or may not still have issues with radon, uh, contamination, you know, what are we looking at if we were going to, going to drill an additional well?
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Good. Uh, well, first of all, you need the $400,000 that I'm mentioning, plus you have to drill the well.
Yeah.
And timelines.
Let's say it again.
I was going to say in the timeline for drilling that well, right? And then making it operational.
Oh yeah, about the six months minimum.
Harry, let me take another perspective on this. I've, I've done some business continuity analysis, disaster recovery, whatever you want to call it. And let's just say that the likelihood of the interconnect, uh, failing at some point, whether it's some, uh, problem, other side of the interconnect several miles away or whatever. Let's just say that that likelihood is pretty much a certainty at some point in the 10-year future. Now, if that is the case, we have two wells, both of them capable, each capable of, uh, filling our needs. But this is, this gets into the crazy part of it. If a whole section of Houston is without water, we're looking at a Flint, Michigan type of situation. And I don't know what familiarity you have there, what kind of solutions they came up with. But I don't want all of West Houston coming into Jersey Village to fill their water bottles. Wells won't work, won't meet our needs.
I know we'd be selling it pretty good.
That's, uh, the, the silver lining, I guess.
Yes, sir. Uh, well, councilman, I can also add one more layer of possible relief. And that is that we have two other interconnects, uh, permitted to us in the city that we don't use. Uh, we have, um, we have two interconnects, two, uh, two adjacent muds. Um, they're a bidirectional valves. And so if they have an emergency, they could come to us and say, hey, can we, can we, you know, get some water? And we can flip it their direction and vice versa. We can then ask them, can we take some of your water? We already have these agreements in place, uh, for a total of four interconnects. One is the, uh, the main City of Houston interconnect. We then have two others scattered around the city. Uh, and we have a fourth one underneath the 290 frontage road.
And each, each of those is a potential source of water for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well then I would suggest that maybe trying to get this well going again is more overkill for redundancy than anything else. I, I don't, I'm agree with you. I don't think, see that we need it.
Yeah, I agree. The interconnection, if, if you've got other interconnections, that, that makes sense. Yeah. Now I see where you're going with it.
Yeah. Harry, let me ask you a couple of questions. So we have a, we have, uh, the West Red well has 66 million gallon capacity per month. Uh, we're using 33. The, the other well has a 38 or 39 million gallon capacity per month. And again, we're using 33. So what is, what are we buying from the City of Houston? What is the City of Houston's interconnect capacity?
Oh, that's a good question. Uh, I don't know that we're allowed to go to full capacity, uh, without talking to them or, uh, yeah. So I, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I apologize if I can get that.
I want to say maybe a million and a half a day or 45 million a month. Is that in the ballpark?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, and I don't, I don't know if that's the full capacity.
Right.
But as far as the permit goes, I think that is the ballpark. We're required to, uh, purchase 22 million, whether we use it or not. We are currently using 33 million, but I do recall there's some limit that we just can't suck them dry.
Right. So right now, uh, our total capacity from three sources, again, varying degrees, exceeds our usage by about four times.
Yes, sir.
Plus the other interconnects in a case of emergency. So I think the, I think the, the one other point is that we don't know if the well that we would rehab is even good.
Correct.
Not to mention that the whole Northwest Water Authority directive is to do away with wells.
Correct.
Kind of, we're heading in the wrong direction, counterproductive. And we've more than exceeded our current capacity, our future capacity and our contingent capacities. So my suggestion is that we cap the well. If we're going to invest in more infrastructure, let's do it across 290 with another interconnect or, or some other well over there, although I'm not in favor of necessarily wells because again, it's counterproductive to, to Harris County and we're paying a fortune on top of that for that water or the fees to Northwest Water, uh, the Regional Water Authority. So from my opinion, the answer to your question is cap the well, focus on, um, across 290, Village Center, another well or another interconnect.
I didn't say it better myself. But always good discussion, guys. And Harry, excellent. Excellent as always with the analysis and the, and the options and, and, uh, yeah, and, and I do echo what James said earlier, which is, uh, the condition of that well being what it is, uh, really reflects poorly on the previous, uh, previous staff members that were in charge of it. Not, not great. Um, and I'm, but I'm glad you guys are here and, and, uh, definitely keeping on top of it.
I was just going to say, interject, uh, just want to say thank you to Roy for his excellent work and all this.
Yes.
He, he was a, a very big supporter of all, everything we're talking about.
Excellent work. Yeah. Your staff is to be commended for all of this. Great, great work.
And thank you for staying up this late on this call, Mr. Garcia.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move to approve resolution number 2020 dash five seven.
Harry has a second. Uh, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'll move us into item G, Mayor and Council comments. Um, I'll start with, uh, Councilman Singleton.
Well, my comment is actually about FEMA grants. So, uh, Austin, you brought this process to JV and you've been very incredibly successful at obtaining grants. I did a little bit of research in the open FEMA data set since we were added on the agenda tonight and found that in Texas, over 500 entities have been awarded FEMA grant money since 1989. In terms of the most dollars awarded, Jersey Village placed 52nd out of over 500. Our share of federal funds is in line with the City of Brownsville, Bastrop County, Orange County, Victoria County, and the City of League City, which is 10 times our population. Uh, we're applying for yet another grant. I just like to recognize the staff for outperforming so many other entities far larger than them in the state of Texas for FEMA funds.
Very good. Absolutely. And to piggyback on that, uh, you know, a lot of those cities we named are using professional entities to write those grants as well. And you guys are doing it yourself. And that, that's awesome. That's amazing. Thank you, James. Uh, Bobby?
Well, James, you really put some real research into that. Uh, I was going to say, uh, first of all, sorry for jinxing the whole short council meeting. We obviously went a little long on the normal. That's my, my bad if you're into, into superstition. But, uh, I just, I, I wanted to say, you know, as we move into Thanksgiving week, I know that, uh, uh, 2020 is a year that's, uh, at least at first glance, seems like it's not one to leave a lot to be thankful for. But I, I think it's years and times like this where it's even more important to focus on the things that, that we are thankful for. For those of us who, who still have our health, that's certainly something to be thankful for, uh, and to have family. And, and for those of us lucky enough to be able to, to continue to, to do work from home and to stay safe. That's, that's something, uh, I know I'm thankful for and, and, uh, you know, it's. you know, it's, I, I just, I, I just wanted to encourage people to, to, to take, I know it's usually something we always talk about at Thanksgiving, but I think it's even more important this year with everything going on to, to really take the time to, to count your blessings and look past the bad and, and focus on the good.
Thank you, Bobby. Drew?
Hey, I'll piggyback on the gratitude and I can loop both James's and Bobby's comments. And James, I'm, I'm grateful for, for the city staff, for all the dedication they put in, bringing in untapped sources of revenue so we can keep tax, tax dollars you know, low or tax revenue low. I, I'm grateful for my fellow council members and our mayor for the time you give to the city and, and your ability. And the deliberations we have are, are not spiteful. Often we get along, but when we don't, it's, we articulate strong reasoning and we generally come to conclusions or at least agree to disagree and, and in a very diplomatic way. So on those two things, I wish each of you and the fellow citizens of Jersey Village a very healthy and happy and grateful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Drew. Greg?
Just to reiterate what, what Bobby, Drew and James said. James, it's great information. That would, that would go well in the Jersey Village star. I think that, I think the citizens need to know that type of information. Harry, the 90-minute challenge, we could do it if you want to. But, but anyways, no, I, I don't have any comments. I, maybe to reiterate, Drew, I, I, I'm, I'm thankful for all the city council members and the staff. And Austin, you've done a great job. I, I do like the, the, the discussions we have. I think they're very thorough and to the point and I think it, it has a, a good end result. So, but thank you all.
And Greg, Gary?
Yeah, I just add to what James said. I think the city could get a lot more money if Austin would run for Senator, but
Don't do that.
Going into Thanksgiving, I want to, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one also. Let's be careful out there. I may have taken a nap somewhere in the meeting, but I don't remember who was the employee of the month. So if that could get filled in before the night's over, I'd be very happy.
Danielle Cardova, our Public Works Administrator Secretary, was the employee of the month.
Did I take a nap?
You did. You took a nap, Gary.
I'm sorry.
I think you had a stroke somewhere along the meeting as well.
My smile is still even. That's all I got.
Thank you, Harry. Yeah, great information, James. We, we are, as, as somebody who's been on council since 2015 and I've, and, and helped bring Austin here, probably the best decision that we've made, if you look at everything that we've done and accomplished in the city is doesn't, doesn't matter what we want to do. If you don't have the person here that can do the right things and, and bring in the right people and, and make everyone work cohesively, it doesn't matter. And Austin, Austin, your staff, you guys have been, you've improved the quality of life of a lot of people here and, and, and that's really top, I mean, my hat off to you. There's still a lot going on as far as this pandemic. You know, I work in a place where we have hundreds of people that come in every single day. Please continue to wear your mask if you're interacting with people. It, it, you may be an extremely healthy person, but you never know what someone else's circumstances are. I have a few staff members who take care of elderly parents. I have one staff member with, you know, a special needs child that if that child got COVID, it would be a very horrible thing. So please wear your mask whenever you can. Not just for yourself, but for the people you're interacting with. You, you may save a stranger's life and you don't even know it. Let's continue to patronize our local businesses. They may go through another hard time coming up really soon. And let's just all be very careful. Thank you to everybody who put this meeting together, all the information that we were able to look through in the packet to make our decisions today was, was all very thorough. So thank you so much for that. Your weekly updates are, are great. And I promise I will write a mayor's newsletter, Austin, at some point when I actually have time to sit down and do something. And I will, I will probably be the one who puts the information that James, James shared it. Because I think our citizens really need to know that. That's, that is a, that is an amazing accomplishment. So thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving and we'll see you back here next month. Meeting adjourned.